Wow.
All right, welcome everybody to the Select Board meeting of December 2nd. It is now 6:33 and we will start as per usual with the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual liberty and justice for all.
And roll call the board members, Dan Hemway, for the Select Board.
Marlo Harris.
Jean-Christine Lee.
We are all present. Meeting rules and procedures, I don't think we really need them, but we run it like a classroom. So, we should be good here. Announcements, do you have a couple of announcements? Tomorrow is Giving Tuesday, so if you're looking to do good with your donations at the end of the year to your favorite charity or nonprofit, tomorrow's a great time to do it. Also, the annual Webster tree lighting will take place Saturday, December 7th at 6:00 PM. That's next week. The tree is behind the Webster Elementary School and the baseball field. The school combined chorus will be singing there, so come on out and enjoy the festivities. Tax bills should be arriving to you soon, but are already available in the online tax portal. They are due by January 6th. The tax collector is open additional hours and days, which are listed on the website. Do we have any further announcements?
You have taken care of my announcements, thank you.
I have some, yes. Okay, December 7th, craft show is in Webster Town Hall from, I think it's 8:00 to 3:00 something. It's usually interesting, a lot of crafters here sell on their crafts. And a craft show will be held December 14th, from 8:00 probably to 3:00 or 4:00, at BD Electric and Penicote, with a lot of the same crafters and all. It's very interesting and a lot of, we got a lot of talented people, I could say.
There was a good craft showing down at Pillsbury Lake.
Oh yeah, the other day.
I think last, not this Sunday, but last Sunday? I might have that wrong. But that was pretty full and a bunch of people, so yes, we have a very craft-filled set of folks in town. So, come on out and enjoy that and see what they're up to. Anything further?
I'm done.
All right. So that brings us to our appointments, first of which is Brian Ross. So come on down regarding the Pearson Hill Cell Tower Verizon upgrade.
Can I sit here?
You can, wherever you want, yeah.
I just wouldn't recommend playing musical chairs, because we don't have that much music.
Oh, okay. I'm sure it's good, though.
That was a good one.
Good evening, my name's Brian Ross. I work for Structured Consulting Group. It's a, we do site acquisition and construction services for Verizon Wireless. So I am here on behalf of Verizon for the proposed co-location project at the 110 Pearson Hill Road Cell Tower. Currently AT&amp;T is on that tower and Verizon is looking to co-locate on it. I think for most, page C1, which is the third page, is probably going to be the most helpful. A lot of the other pages are, you know, detailed, a lot of detail that we probably don't need to get into tonight. So, just the basic scope is, of course, there is a, there's a need for Verizon service in the area. There has been for a long time. I know that I didn't have any service on my Verizon phone and had to use my AT&amp;T phone too, to use when I was out in the parking lot. So, so what Verizon is looking to do is they're looking, if you look at the compound plan in the northwest, I'm gonna call it the northwest corner, they'll be having a 12-by-20 concrete pad, which will have the jet generator, the backup propane generator, a battery cabinet, as well as an equipment cabinet on it. Above the equipment cabinet, the battery cabinet, and the telco box and the electrical panel, there'll be an ice bridge to protect it from falling ice. And then in the, I'm gonna call it, towards the north-northeast, you're going to see that there is a 4-by-8 pad that a 500-gallon propane tank will be situated on. And then you can see from the equipment cabinet, there is a, an ice bridge that runs from, from the equipment to the tower. And what will, there'll be two high reflex cables going from the equipment cabinet all the way up to the equipment at the top of the tower, or at the centerline of 155 feet, which is both fiber and DC power. On the tower itself, currently AT&amp;T is at 165 feet. Verizon's proposed to have their equipment at 155 feet. This will consist of nine antenna, six remote radio heads, a junction box, and then of course, the, the two high reflex cables that will be coming from the equipment cabinet, communicating, allowing the antenna and whatnot to communicate with the equipment and then to the outside world through the fiber optic cable. So, that's kind of a brief overview of what this, what the plan is. It's a very typical setup on a tower, typical co-location on, on any cell tower. I don't know if the board has any questions or...
So, there again, probably most people understand that. Not hugely, familiar with the, oh, how it all works. But more or less, AT&amp;T owns the tower.
No.
No, who owns the tower?
So it's, um, Eastern properties owns the towers?
Okay, so somebody comes in, puts a tower.
Yep.
Then they go to somebody like AT&amp;T.
Yep.
Because I was trying, trying to think how that all worked out, if I was AT&amp;T and T. No, Verizon. But anyways, if you own the tower, right?
Yeah.
But somebody else owns the tower, you come in and AT&amp;T come in and even, I don't know if US Cellular would come in.
Yep.
And, and, but, but what happens is you have to have the room down below to have your equipment, where AT&amp;T's already got their equipment there, I'm assuming.
They do, yeah. You can see it on the, on the west portion of the compound. You can see existing AT&amp;T, yeah.
So, by no means is this a new tower, just as when I was actually talking the other day, my husband goes, "Well, there's a tower right there." Oh my god. So, yeah. And then you're just gonna add to it to help your Verizon customers. Now, do you and US Cellular, you guys kind of piggyback, piggyback off each other anyways, don't you? Not really?
I don't know in what way.
Well, I don't know, I'm sorry. I just always thought that, well, maybe because you own your own tower sometimes? And US Cellular will pay you to use your tower?
And it's reciprocal, they own their own towers.
Yeah, that's what I'm, that's what I mean by piggybacking.
Yeah, so yeah, AT&amp;T owns their own towers, Verizon owns their own towers, T-Mobile, and then there's also...
A single guy that just owns his own tower.
Yeah, or there's also large companies that own tens of thousands of towers across the country that everyone also co-locates on, so, yeah.
Cool, piggyback.
Yeah, exactly, yeah.
So, okay, so more or less, what, what impact you will make is just the fact that there may be a little bit more equipment coming out of the tower and into the, into the, you know, your other pad.
Yes, yeah.
Almost like AT&amp;T already has on one side, you'll have it on the other side.
Exactly. With, yeah, not expanding the compound, not bump, bumping up the fence of, of the compound, staying within it. Yeah, it's gonna be a fairly similar setup to AT&amp;T. They kind of all have the same setup for the equipment. They may have different manufacturers, but it's all the same, pretty much the same.
Now, do you own the land or you just use, rent the land from the landlord?
The tower owner leases the land from the property owner.
Okay, okay. So there's no, so you don't own any property yet?
No, no.
And the town, does the town, town get any tax money from that?
I'm, uh, I bet.
We do?
I bet we do.
I'll bet we do, okay, that's good.
I don't know how much of that is based on the equipment that's on it versus that there's a tower, but we get tax.
Yeah.
Oh, okay, okay. Well, I just wondered because it was already on somebody else's property.
Verizon was thinking about doing a donation.
No, I'm saying, okay. Well, I just wondered because it's on somebody else's property. So that's why I asked if you owned it, but so we get it from the tower anyway.
The tower is assessed separately.
Yeah, it's all separate assessments.
That's good, interesting assessment. Okay, again, everyone understands this.
I'll clarify a couple of things, which I think I know the answers to now, from your inclination and from this chart. And the first of which is that you are just, as far as the tower is concerned, you're running a lineup and you're adding an additional platform or array of antennas below the existing antennas. So there's no additional tower height or anything.
That's correct, yeah.
And the second is that you are adding an additional concrete pad and footprint, but that is within the current fenced-in compound footprint.
Right.
Okay. So the last one then, that I don't know if you know the answers to offhand, or if they're in here already. Do you know what the current power output is for the existing AT&amp;T array? And how much are you expecting to add to it?
Yeah, so do you mean by like the NPE or the, like the electromagnetic emissions?
Yeah, basically.
So, I don't know what AT&amp;T is putting out. And I don't know exactly what Verizon will be putting out, but it's all, you know, below the FCC stan, you know, limits. And I know that there, there will be internal documentation created once it goes on air to make sure that it's below their permissible emission rates.
Does that end up splitting with AT&amp;T, so there's a total output for the tower? Or is it total output per set of, array of antennas, or how does that actually work?
Do you mean, will we be test, we'll be only testing what Verizon's equipped with?
So, if you put, for example, two next to each other and they're both outputting there, you're gonna have a stronger output, obviously. So now we've got two of them instead of just one. Is the FCC regulations, are those tied to just one array, or are they tied to the tower as a whole?
Both, yeah. I can tell you very generally is that on a tower, or the, the most emissions are going to be at the height of the antenna, maybe, and this is just very general, maybe 100 feet out, but at that height. So, what, if you have someone at the gr, the ground, like next to the tower, it's going to be, you know, almost negligible to, close to zero. Just like when you see it on top of rooftops, that's why they don't like them, you know. They have to really massage where they're pointing them and things like that, because if there's another buildings next door, they don't want, you know, it to be too close and then putting, you know, having the emissions maybe higher than they should be around the general population.
Yeah, I think that covers it to know where we're at, and make sure that everybody can understand where we're at. Any other questions or comments for him?
I'm sure this is exciting to some people.
Yes, one of them might be sitting right here.
No, he's AT&amp;T.
No, yeah, we're AT&amp;T. Only, we went to AT&amp;T only because of Verizon. We had no Verizon signal here. That was the only reason. I had AT&amp;T for 30 years.
You mean, you had AT&amp;T or Verizon?
I mean, I had Verizon for 30 years, but they couldn't fill any gaps out here.
Here we are.
It's hard to work when you need your phone.
Oh, don't we all know?
Well, it's easier to work when you don't have a phone.
Yeah. Well, you just got that person that you need. We are spoiled.
Okay, so what is the process and what are we actually being asked?
Just do a motion to approve the upgrades and then I'm gonna send out the letter tomorrow with the Select Board's approval.
I make a motion to accept the upgrades on the tower for Verizon.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
That's the easiest thing of the night.
Our townsfolk look forward to having you.
I'm sure they do. Can you imagine if we voted against it?
We might all have been voted off. You mean, I might be able to use my cell phone at my house, there's a surprise.
I get it, yeah.
Well, it was funny because, well, and I have US Cellular, of 30-some odd years. But I do have, I can talk from here. But if some people can't, and then you got AT&amp;T, well, I didn't realize that there's a tower, because that's when my husband says, "Well, there's a tower right there." Like, and I just always assume it's Verizon or US Cellular, and I know you guys work together. I guess now this is how it works. So he puts a tower up.
Yeah.
Well, now if you owned it, I'm gonna be, maybe you can't answer this, but if you own the tower, would you let US Cellular come on that tower?
Of course, yeah, yeah.
So, you do work together, in a sense.
Almost required to allow for co-location on top, yeah. You, when you build a new tower, a lot of the times municipality will, you'll have to build it to accept four carriers.
Oh, four, okay, so, so there's a limit, but, but yeah, and there's really not much more than that, I think.
Not anymore, yeah, yeah, so.
That's just interesting.
They get along pretty well, everyone, you know, there's some differences, but everyone gets along. Because they all have, you know, the same area they need to, to service.
And it is funny because, you know, I got guys that have Verizon, I got guys that have US Cellular. Now, I don't want to AT&amp;T, to be honest with you, but anyways, you know, I'll get from some of my help or my kids, now that are young adults that work for us, "I, we need to switch." I'm like, but it's not always good, we're, it's, it's really...
That's right.
It's really just the service beyond the tower, in a sense.
Exactly, yeah.
Thankfully 5G is helping that.
Yeah.
For serviceability in lots of locations that couldn't get it previously.
Yeah, because it is important, because we do depend on it. But thank you.
I forgot to ask about it, but I believe Russ was looking at this earlier. But what is the general capacity of something like, like this tower? To be able to co-locate something like a repeater for the radios that our police and our fire departments use?
Oh, I am working on that. I got, we're talking about leasing options now with the...
I see, you're talking with the tower owners.
Correct.
Okay.
As again, somebody owns the tower, which they don't.
So the answer is yes, those, those are options that exist.
Likely not gonna be very affordable, but we'll see.
I'm not saying that. I just wanted to know if it actually would. Or if it was like, oh, this is basically just cellular and that would have interference problems or whatever.
They said they would send us some options and, okay, when I have the pricing, I'll bring it back to the board. And see what, see how affordable it is.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for coming in.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for having me.
Next, right? Next, next meeting, next hour.
I'm just glad we don't have to build a new one.
Well, right. That's it.
No, nobody wants the random fake trees spot propping up in the middle of nowhere.
Yes, they do, that, whoever came up with that idea was just spectacular.
But they stick out like a sore thumb.
Well, that's why I, I, yeah. I'm not even really sure who, who, yeah.
In, in the desert, it's actually kind of cool, because they do it with fake cactus. And so because the cactus are round, they actually take the cactus off of the antenna system and it's completely inside a fake cactus. It's not like, oh, I'm decorating this with leaves and pretending it's a pantry. All right, next up is department heads. Come on down.
At least one.
You're the important one.
Oh, that's not very nice.
It's winter time. I think the highway's pretty, uh, pretty important right now. I'd be in trouble without those guys.
You, you wouldn't have to clean up crashes from skating on ice out there, would you?
No, you saw that, right?
What, what?
Somebody, uh, in a trash truck or whatever, skidded and left trash everywhere.
Where was that?
Did you see that?
Where was that?
Coming in from 127?
No.
Oh my god.
Coming from the Four Corners down, like six, six bags all over the...
Oh, meaning it's probably somebody threw it in the back of their own trailer and they lost it.
And lost it on the way.
Oh, jeez.
You think that was the guys?
Well, it was right on the corner, so it could have been.
Yeah. Boy, what a good, don't give people ideas.
So, from the last financial report, which was on 11/21, I've spent $245,321.33 out of my 24 budget. I still have one fourth of my budget left. I got 25.49% of my budget left.
Wow. Well, that's because we're not fully staffed, so.
Yes, that's the reason why. And I'm hoping that we can set a little bit of that aside, because I got two guys that we're probably gonna hire for sure, it looks like.
Ooh.
So I'm gonna need, actually, three vests, and they're like 15, 18 hundred bucks a piece. So I'll, waiting for the quote to come, so we can set that aside. I just wanna take it out of this budget.
I'm hoping Steve, for the next Select Board meeting, when we talk about incomparances, end of the year incomparances. So if you have that figure...
Yeah, that's what I'm waiting for. I, I should have it either tomorrow or Wednesday. So, the minute I get it, I'll zip it right to you, so you'll know.
Because I, you know, we put them all at the same time.
And that's money, you kind of...
Yeah, because it's, so any hemorrhages would have to be by the 16th.
Right.
Because we don't meet after that.
No. Not on the first, the 30th, we have 26 stops, one big fine, which makes me happy. The office is handling 30 calls for service, the typical list, civil matters, domestic violence petitions, juvenile petitions, mental health services, motor vehicle complaints, pistol permits, residential burglary allowance, road hazards, sex offenders, suspicious activities, subpoena service, assist to the fire and EMS. There's always, that's usually a lot of, a lot of them. Assist to citizens, theft by unauthorized person taking, and one criminal mischief. Which kind of rounded about everything else. So it was a relatively quiet month, which I was kind of happy about. So, hopefully it stays that way.
That's right.
It's been fairly quiet, really, isn't it? Yeah, I know, I know. Wait a, there you are.
Let's hope it stays that way.
I just wonder why you don't put, like, one, we get our report, how many, how many little civil matters or whatever, just, you know, a number. I just think, to me, it's kind of neat if you, if we do that, kind of...
I kind of, because it's such a huge list, I try to just throw them all in here, that these are the calls that we went to during the...
But you can still just throw in the, you know, just do it the same exact way, except if you don't mind, just put in the...
I'll put a little number in with parentheses beside.
For each one, instead of just the total number of calls.
Yeah, for each one, right, just print it the same way, yeah. You don't need a list list, just, that would be great.
That might not be bad for our citizens that are paying for it, to kind of know, like, oh, crap. This is where our cops are, making spend most of their time and their money and...
When you get to the citizens assist and the mental health problems, that's where you end up in sometimes two, three days by the time you get everything else squared away with it.
Oh, yeah, I believe, but I think if people know, I think it's kind of nice to, oh gee, you know, and maybe they can help somehow, I don't know.
That was a positive way, I think, right there.
By doing less of those activities.
Yeah, right, exactly.
That's the help right there. Less activities is better.
But you know, the thing is, I've only been writing for like forever, 50 years or something. But people don't, you know, this is fine, but when they start, oh jeez, you know, so many people got stopped for speeding. Maybe I shouldn't speed through Webster, or whatever, you know, do stupid things, because people are doing stupid things, so.
Kind of funny, I wrote a ticket this morning and then there was a guy standing up here crossing the road to get his mail. And as I'm going the other direction, of course, the car is coming down over the hill, and that car's flying by. So here I am, I'm starting to turn around, and he's freaking screaming and yelling, he got his arm up and he's pointing. I went, I knew, I'm on my way after him right now.
Okay, this is your ticket, and then the guy yelled at me back there, so that's extra.
So I'm gonna drop a copy to him, so who knows?
But that's, but that's, you know, PR is a big thing.
Oh, absolutely.
Any, any company, so, and I'm one of those types, so, you know, numbers are good.
Okay.
We want small numbers.
Well, yeah, of course.
Small numbers.
Yeah, so you mentioned the, the hires, I was gonna ask, since that wasn't in the report. So, when are we expecting that you might actually...
So, we tried, tried to get Ben into the January Academy, they're full.
Wow.
So, um, he's got one more thing he's gotta do, he's gotta take his final PT test to make sure he passes that. If he does that, then we'll go to the next step and figure out a date for hire. And we're gonna send him to the part-time academy.
I was gonna say, is there anywhere else you can go?
There's a part-time academy that's 16 weeks long, and, but he goes three days a week. So, we're gonna pay him, we might as well put him to school, let him, this will put him...
So he'll go three days there, three days here?
Yeah, that'll, that'll put him two steps ahead when he goes to the full-time academy, because it's like a condensed version.
So he will have a, a shorter or more condensed academy to do, instead of...
Right.
Okay, good.
So that'll, that'll help him and us, big time, because now he'll, he'll see it first, then he'll come back, get a chance to use some of it, and then he goes to the full-time academy and he'll really have a lot to do.
Which is kind of, that's kind of a no-brainer, actually.
Yeah, I like that.
I don't know why that doesn't count more.
And our guy from California, we're just waiting for the rest of the stuff from California, and he looks like he's gonna be a go.
Oh, good.
I'm kind of happy about that. He's raring to go. It's kind of funny, because I, he's 49, I think, 49 to 50. I said, "Are you gonna be able to do a PT test?" And he says, "Uh, what if I gotta do it?" I said, "Push-ups, setups, and a mile and a half run." He just, "How far, how much time?" And I said, "Jeez, I think it's like 17 minutes to do a mile and a half run." He goes, "I run three miles every other day. If I can't do three miles in under 20 minutes, I stop drinking beer until I can do it." So usually that's really good to get me going, so I'll do the run. He says, "Yeah, I think I can do that, no problem at all."
That's great, though. Those requirements are funny, though, aren't they?
Oh, yeah.
And they're age-based, too, so.
It's age-based, but there's not a, not a huge gap in between it, but it's a stickler. You one second behind, you're out.
Yeah, that's not always a good thing.
No.
Doing a good job, sir, getting those people and all that.
Well, right, I mean, that's a battle worse than your daily job. Find it people. That's what I feel like.
And they get so many openings everywhere.
Oh, yeah, yeah. No, you feel like you're fighting an uphill battle, to be honest with you. So, you having a couple people? Yeah, we just lost, we had a driver that passed away unfortunately, and too young of age, and then somebody gave their notice, and I'm like, huh, this is gonna be fun. And, and he gave his notice because it's gonna be five minutes from his house instead of 45 minutes. It's like, yeah, I understand, but it just leaves you going...
It still hurts.
Oh, boy.
Try and find another driver. They will pass this test and everything.
Far, want to, yeah, yeah, they should. I had this young kid go, "Yeah, I've never run anything along with this, but I get paid 35, 40 dollars an hour." I said, "You probably should stay right there." I got done chatting with him and everything, he's like, he's up to that money, and I'm like, "You don't even have experience in what we do." I can get that one, talk about feeling like you're...
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, we haven't talked about this in, in a while with either of our chiefs, but how is the building doing?
Actually, the building is really good. It's got one problem, and that was ice from last year. And it's right over the entrance going into the police station. The metal roof is peeled right out. So, I've got to hold a Ron Derby to see if he can come fix it, so, because it's peeled up that high. But, the way it's peeled, the ice got, I mean, they can lift it, but all the snow right now is draining out, so nothing's going inside, and it's at the overhang, so.
That's really kind of a small problem.
Building's holding up good, yeah, small problem for, you know, building's, 20 years old.
And he's somebody that should be able to fix some of the problems on that building.
I'm sure he can fix some of that roof. So, other than that, everything else is good with the building.
Good.
Awesome. All right. Anything further for department heading stuff?
Not for me.
Okay.
Budget time.
Thank you.
So, yeah, that leaves us on to our 2025 budget.
Aren't we done?
Well, I know you had, we have the solid waste budget, you haven't filled in what figure you want in there. So, I'd like to talk about that. And then I didn't know if you wanted to review the budget as a whole tonight? Or if you don't have the...
That might not be a bad idea.
Damn enough of that.
I mean, it is only seven, so that's good.
Who's voting on that?
Well, everybody, at some point. So I guess...
I'll be tired of budget.
Oh, no, it's just that time of year.
Is it, is that what it is? Because it's dark.
We all, we all had the, we're, we're done with our Thanksgiving hibernation, so now it's time to enjoy. The, and we had a first...
You.
Thank you for coming. So, it was transfer station, and what was the other one that you mentioned?
The overall budget. I know, I, you know, I, we've gotten the highway department resolved, and I don't know if you wanted to speak more about that, but I did notice it was in. And.
Well, that's, what's filled in is basically from what we talked about at the last meeting.
Understood.
So, um, I don't know that he's seen that yet.
I don't think so.
But, uh, it's a little bit better than what he asked for, so I don't think there should be a problem, I hope. But we should definitely talk to him.
Well, I hope not.
So, yeah, so let's, uh, jump into the transfer station.
Okay, so what do you, what you have, that you're working on, but I don't.
And my first question, uh, so this is what's in our spreadsheet, the one that I emailed out.
Yes, right, yes, but did we print, I didn't.
I don't know if that's printed.
I'm sorry, because I did print it and I didn't bring it.
And there was also the printing from them for the last one. Okay.
Just.
So it should be in there.
Yeah.
Otherwise I was looking over the show.
And J is yours.
Well, you can do that.
And.
Is this one, or is it the other one?
The solid waste budget is on page.
That's ten, nineteen.
Be determined.
So what are we talking about doing right now? Going to each item?
First, it's gonna be the transfer station, because that's what we haven't really filled in. Which page did you say?
Twenty-four.
Oh, I missed it by one.
You did. It's fine, thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you. Oh, you can find it.
Okay, so this is the other sheet. This is the, this is the one that Dana had done, uh, previously. So mine will look a bit different.
Right.
The first question, when I put all of the information in that they gave us, uh, was expenditures to date from us was, uh, one thirty-eight, eight forty-four. And there, the twenty-five percent of their expenditures to date was one thirty-eight, four eighty-three. When is the kind of true-up for the final amount, and how does that get worked out throughout the, the year for us paying?
We usually get one bill a year.
Oh.
And, um.
So we've already paid our bill for the year?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
For the transfer station?
Yes.
So how much was the bill that you did?
I mean, and again, maybe I should reclassify that, because I don't believe there's going to be another bill.
Okay. So we've paid according to the, the charts.
Yep.
Uh, one thirty-eight, eight forty-four.
Oh, right here, right here. Yep, okay, sorry.
And.
I don't know what I'm looking at.
Well, that, this is confusing, because Hoppington's budget is below, so that's.
Yes.
Their budget, so ours is just the one line.
Yep, but ours should be twenty-five percent of what's below, uh, minus revenues.
There's revenues that don't show there.
The part of my question was also, um, the way that this has been looked at, we've typically only ever looked at the transfer station accounts. But there's always, also now the solid waste cleanup accounts, and then also the community well accounts that are because of the transfer station. So do we pay, we do pay part of the community well accounts as well for the upkeep, correct?
You know, I'm not really sure, maybe that's included in part of what they billed us for the hundred thirty-eight.
Because when I, when I do all of the calculations, with revenue offset, that's where I get the one thirty-eight to date.
Whatever, yeah, yeah. The cleanup is not in this at all.
Well, so, so the solid waste cleanup accounts are not in here?
No.
Interesting, because that was part of the normal budget for the engineering fees, the, uh, professional services.
I believe if you look at what they gave us, they included them separately.
Yeah, so they have them as solid waste cleanup accounts, and then the well accounts, and then the landfill revenue accounts. Are the four that they gave us on the sheet last week.
But it's not in the operating budget.
The solid waste cleanup accounts, and, yeah, the, all of those are in their operating budget.
Was it added into the total operating budget? I, that's where I'm.
So that, that's why I was asking about it, because when I run all of those with the revenue offset.
That's where you get the figure, yeah.
That's where the one thirty-eight matches up. So, let's see. Nope, that's not gonna include that much. I was trying to think if maybe without the, without revenues and without solid waste, if the cleanup stuff, if maybe it lined up too, but no.
Yeah, that's, uh.
You know, I wonder if it would be good to have like a little separate line saying how much the town of Webster gets from the money that the, just for like a PR thing in a way.
You mean from the revenue?
Yes, revenues.
So the, um, I actually have that sitting here.
Oh, but we don't have it.
Yeah, so this is printed from the, the one version instead of from the original version of the budget worksheet, which is what I have in front of me, that I added much stuff to and sent out links to.
Right.
And so the, the revenues, uh, let's see. Revenues to date to the transfer station are fifteen eighty-three from Warner for reimbursement, because they used to be part of it.
Yep.
Hundred twenty-eight thousand, three hundred ninety-four from, uh, commercial use. Forty-three thousand, nine hundred thirteen from recycling revenue. And that's their total, and so twenty-five percent of that would be ours. And so using the same formulas and figures, uh, that got those numbers, uh, using their proposed budget, the, the, the proposed, but, sorry, I'll start with the twenty-twenty-four, what we're in now.
Yeah, okay.
Their budget for that was one ninety-two, two eighty-five, uh, for, for what we would have owed. And so their total budget was seven sixty-nine, one thirty-nine for the budgets minus projected revenues. And the, what they are proposing for the budget has, uh, the large increase, uh, let's see, the larger increases in like overtime and electricity, which we're waiting to hear why that is set that way, because it should actually be lower with community power. But there's also been, uh, a significant expected increase in revenue side, with the fees actually matching up the way that they were supposed to after a ten-year update. So, uh, we're, they're projecting that instead of seven sixty-nine, one thirty-nine being the total, uh, for budget minus revenues, that the, for the upcoming budget, it would be six sixty-four, one fifty-two. And which then our percentage would be, uh, our twenty-five percent would equal one sixty-six, oh, three eight. That is lower than the projected from last ti, from this year, which was one ninety-two, two eighty-five, but higher than what we've actually paid. And somehow there was a budget number of a hundred and forty-two thousand that was for this year in our budget. And we've only done the expenditures to date, which is one thirty-eight, eight forty-four. If that's the only bill, then that's great. Uh, but somewhere the numbers don't actually line up with the way that they're calculated, so we kind of need to know that.
You might not get the bill until April, and, which includes the previous year. I mean, it doesn't come cut at the end of the year.
Oh, so it's not yearly.
It makes it, it makes it a little difficult to.
So it's kind of like.
Do it like the way we're trying to do it, yeah.
So it's basically eight months and four months.
And I'm just, I'm just giving you an example, Dave, I mean.
That's kind of.
But it's part of when you.
They send it when they do it, is really what I'm trying to tell you.
Okay.
You mean Hoppington's, yeah.
Yeah.
That's interesting.
Well.
But if you like, I mean, I can, I can, I can delve into that a little more, I don't know enough about it, really.
I think knowing that would help us better for.
I think so, too.
Where we should go, because the budgeting is on.
And, and I, when I was thinking of this, I was thinking that the wells, and certainly the cleanup, is not part of the, maybe the operating budget as far as the well is, but.
So if you open up the original one, and instead of the, the one that you did with a one at the end of it, you'll see all of this, these numbers on the solid waste disposal sheet.
I have one with a one?
Yeah. I assume you're in the office through sixty-five? Oh, you're just looking at one half, never mind.
No, this is, this is, here we are, we're back at one sixty-five, so.
Yeah, so you've got in progress one, so if you just go back to the actual, um, drive, I said, go over here, share.
Share?
Yeah.
Okay, sorry, this is not my thing.
Awesome, yours looks very different. Just to make it easy, if yes.
Well, I mean, I.
Anyway.
Yeah, okay.
So.
So at the end of the day, Dave, are you gonna make a recommendation?
So, based, based on the, based on the numbers and the budgets that they gave us, the recommendation should be from what was too low for the recommendation, but turned out to be right, for our previous budget, would be the increase of seventeen percent to twenty-five percent of their proposed budget, which would be a hundred sixty-six, oh, three eight. Now, the fact that we're not getting up to even what our proposed budget was, makes me kind of wonder. So I, I'd like to hear what they think our figure should be, and why they think it should be that if it's not the one sixty-six, oh, three eight number.
And that one sixty-six, oh, three, three eight, that is twenty-five percent of their budget less revenues?
Yeah, twenty-five percent of their projected budget for transfer station accounts, solid waste cleanup accounts, community well accounts, less landfill revenue accounts.
Okay, so you are including the solid waste cleanup in the operating.
With only the, only the three line items that they have in their operating budget.
Okay.
But yes.
All right, okay, so we're on.
And it'd be wonderful not to have to increase that by seventeen percent.
Yeah, that'd be.
That just sounds scary.
Yeah. And if it's like, oh, well, you need, it's, you know, three months from this year, because we're billing at this time, and it's, you know, nine or eight months from the previous. If it's something that simple, then we can just factor that into our numbers and.
And I'll find out whether it's, there's a schedule that they're on, or whether it's not.
Why, why, that's, takes quite that long.
So that will be helpful. Okay. So do we have any other specific topics to look at, or?
Well, I think that the other topic that I thought you might speak about is the overall, the other budgets. If you have any thoughts of recommendations you would like to make to those. Depend, and it's too bad we don't have that figure for the transfer station, because that way you'd know how much the operating budget would go up.
So.
And then what, what, I was looking at today, I think I'm not as privy of paying attention to Excel and looking down below. Because I'm like, I was like, oh, okay, but what? You know what I mean? So my bad, because I wasn't even looking at this page, I was.
Ah, okay.
Do you see what I'm saying?
Yep.
Where he was just over there talking to him, like, what, what did I miss? I missed.
Yeah, it's the worksheets.
Yeah, my bad.
Which in other programs are on the top or on the side?
Well, right, well, whatever, it's still no excuse, because I don't think I always look where I need to look.
And Marla, Dave and I don't have the same, the same thing.
Well, right, right, it, it, well, it's just, it's confusing.
Overall should line up except for the, um, at least I think it should line up except for, uh, the transfer station. Though some of the cells weren't pulling from the right places in the, in the one, so that's why I went back and just fixed and added all the data into this one.
Right, and if I had my phone, I could look at that, but I didn't, because I printed the stuff after work, and I was so happy to leave, I forgot it.
So I will run down the, uh, I'll run down the changes as has been presented, including what we came up with, but has not actually gone through Emmett yet for highways and streets, as well as what we just talked about with the solid waste disposal, uh, using the high number that, that I mentioned, that hopefully is not that high. And I'm not gonna say why these numbers are that way, because I'm not looking into each individual one right now. But, uh, executive up twenty point five K, eleven point four six percent. Elections down four point nine K or six point six three percent. Financial administration up two point one K or two point five percent. Revell, uh, up one point nine K or six percent. Legal personnel, planning, all the same. Buildings up nine forty-two or one point three three percent. Cemetery up eleven K, seventy-two point eight percent, though we should actually talk about that, because I remember that. Uh, that one is including trees that may come out of funds, so we may remove from the budget and put it into funds.
It's not as scary as it sounds.
There's some of those that we'll need to talk about. Insurances, I don't know how up-to-date your sheet was, but I copied what was on, uh, in your one there. So up seventeen K or twelve point two five percent. Is that including insurances for expected police officer?
I've included a family plan.
Okay.
In there. And that could change depending.
Which is the most expensive, right, okay.
Yeah.
So hopefully we wouldn't actually need to spend quite that much.
Yeah.
But that makes sense. Police up twenty-four K or seven point three percent. Again, partially because of new officers that we're hoping to actually get to fill our positions. Uh, ambulance, the same, firefighting up two point seven K or two point four percent. Code enforcement up fifteen point six K or three hundred and fifty-one point six seven percent. And that was because of the hope for an actual code enforcement officer instead of just an inspector. Only saying it because it's three hundred and fifty-one percent.
Dave, not to interrupt you, but the fire department budget. Emmett told me maybe last week that he thought it could go up five percent. And I had done his budget, because he did. So, and so that, you know, is subject to change, and I don't need to go over.
Well, again, we're, this is, this is what we have and what was presented, so, um, none of this is set in stone. This is what we were presented as a first round. Uh, emergency management doesn't change, other public safety is disappearing, so that's a hundred bucks. Highways and streets is up twenty point six K or five percent. Uh, solid waste disposal is up twenty-four K or sixteen point nine percent. Health stays the same, welfare is up one point one K or twelve percent. Community action stays the same, parks and rec is up four point one K or a hundred and twelve percent. This is another case of those trees that may come out of funds. Library is up six K or ten point five nine percent. And then Old Home Day, Energy Committee, Conservation, and our debts are all the same. That reminds me, how did we overdraw for Old Home Day? That shouldn't be possible.
No, it shouldn't, but they spent, well, they have money in their account, and that's where it came out of their checking account. Old Home Day has never been handled properly, as far as I'm concerned, and really.
It was when I was the ch, I was the chairman.
Well, see, it used to be, the town gave Old Home Day the money. Old Home Day managed it by writing their own checks.
Well.
And, and, and doing that. So if they had from year to year, money left in their checking account, obviously they could spend it. Now, we, we run a different rule, because at the end of the year, the money goes back to the general fund. So if they don't spend it off.
Well, no, that's the way it should be, but it's how I feel.
Their expenses exceeded what their allowance was.
So how much is in this checking account that we should have to worry about overages for in future years?
I don't know the exact figure off the top of my head, but it's probably a couple thousand dollars.
Okay. Interesting. Okay.
I, I guess it's, you know, it's, I, you know, we need to have a
We should figure out how that gets fixed.
Figure out with the, with the old home day committee, so they, they understand how, how it works.
They have, should come in front of the select board, personally, I think.
Because that could be a
Because I don't think, I mean, and I'm not criticizing them, because they just don't know.
Like, it could be a fund with them as the agents to, with that committee as the agents to expend?
You mean like a, like a?
Like a trust fund, but they're the agents to expend instead of us?
I don't, I don't.
Because that way, they're still in charge of the
Right, I, I like the idea, but I'm just pondering how it, but.
But something, something should be figured out, so that we don't run into anomalies like this as we go forward.
Let me ponder that.
I don't know how many people are on it, when I was on it, we still like fifteen people.
So I think it's only like three or four.
Yeah, I was gonna say, because we, and I, I know, and then when I finally
I mean, they do work very hard.
Oh, yeah, oh, I know, we did it too.
So, so that leads to an overall operating budget increase of a hundred forty-seven thousand point, point three, which is basically an eight percent increase. Again, that is including several thousand for things like the trees that could come from funds. But some of that is, for example, twenty-four and change in insurances, that's, that's not gonna go anywhere, so.
Right.
Sorry, seventeen and change for insurances, so like, those, those are not gonna go anywhere. But that is where the overall budget is. We didn't go over revenues, I threw some random numbers in, just so it would kind of line up with people who were looking at the rest of the sheet. Same is true with warrant articles. Have we gotten anything from the CIT, so we can talk about actual numbers for these?
I definitely didn't grab them, but we did.
Perfect. So let's talk about, let's, uh, let's get that, so that we can put actual numbers in, as well as as done. Because they have certainly spent plenty of time giving numbers for us.
Chief, can you hear that go by really? Hey, grab that dude.
That's a worse young thing, isn't it?
It sounded fast.
Yeah. And I'm thinking, pipe through, really? At least slow down. Make an attempt.
If it, people think now it's like ten o'clock, eleven o'clock at night, because it's pitch black and has been hours.
Well, I suppose, and they're just racing through, but, yeah.
There shouldn't be anybody on the roads now.
Yeah.
No one will notice.
I should be home at this.
Surprise.
It does do, do, do work to your psyche, though. Because like now, I feel like it's like ten o'clock to me.
Going the wrong way on a red light.
Can you imagine that? I just can't, what is wrong with this?
Oh, yeah, what's up with that?
I just can't imagine. I don't know, I think personally, drivers are getting worse, they, they're on your tail, they don't give you any, you know, you could be going the speed limit, they're right on top of you. It's like, wait a minute, and they don't expect your deer to run out, or, you know, I'm stopping for a deer, so.
You can be well exceeding the speed limit, and they're still on your bumper.
No, right, exactly, you can be on the interstate, and they're still there, it's like, what is wrong with these people?
We took, uh, one of our cruisers down for a recall the other day.
You had what?
We took one of our cruisers down for a recall.
Oh, really?
And, uh, we dropped it off, and, uh, we went down, picked it up today, and it buzzed right off, I got on the interstate, going down the interstate, and I'm in the slow lane, and I'm doing seventy-seven miles an hour, and they have passed me like I'm sitting still, until they get right beside the car, and they look and they see the big sign that says police, and it's like, ooh, and they just kind of generally slow down and slow down, and I said, well, there's one way to fix that. I sped up, got in the passing lane, and stayed there. By the time I got to Conca, there was fifty cars behind me. And they're all, I know, I could hear the landing, they were some kind of piss. And I said, you're going fast enough, they don't need to go any faster than this.
I used to get really annoyed, when I worked in Berlin, I drove a reconstituted police cruiser. It was an Explorer, I mean, a Deacon.
Yeah, right, 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 right.
And I would drive along, and people would look in their mirror and say, oh my God, it took forever to get anywhere.
Because they'd slow right down, and you're like, oh, yeah.
They'd slow right down, yeah, every time.
Well, my old, my father used to always joke about, if you had police, it's every so often, so many cars, you never have anybody speeders, because as soon as they see the police, everybody stops, slows down.
Down on the keys, they just park an empty car. They do.
State police did it in Conca, just as you're coming into Conca, where it goes to fifty-five, they parked a cruiser there with a mannequin, dressed in uniform, for a number of years. And it took a long time for anybody to realize what it was, until somebody had an accident and they pulled in there to talk to him, and it was a mannequin.
Well, and you can shake that up, like, this week a mannequin, not a, you know what I mean? But that's a good, you know, but it worked.
And I'll say that, uh, from, from my previous times of not being such a, uh, good driver, I managed to find a lot of those cops when I was in college. To the point that one of the cops, after it had been a number of stops, uh, going down the thruway in New York, said, I'm gonna tell you something, you're not really supposed to know, but it'll be pretty obvious to you really soon, if it's not already. We're out here every fifteen miles, slow down then. Now, granted, that was many, many, many years ago, so probably not what they're still doing now, but.
Sure do, sure they have.
Marlboro used to do that, we called them Captain Cardboard.
Captain Cardboard?
It was like a cardboard thing, and then stick it in the car, and you're driving, so, oh God, it's a police cruiser, you know, so, Captain Cardboard.
There was one on the way into, uh, Worcester, and they, they did the, like, it's a stuffed dummy sort of thing. But they, he would actually have his arm out with a radar gun.
Oh, that's even better.
The radar gun was like, uh, a piece of a, a coffee cup with the end of a a, a, like, desk lamp stuck to it, that was his radar gun.
I love it.
But they would move it and park it in random places.
Yeah, but it worked, but it worked.
So you didn't know whether, like, it was gonna be him or somebody else.
Move it to everybody.
So when he brings the CIT stuff, then, then we're gonna take it.
Then we're gonna actually see
Have. See, I, I can't believe I forgot.
We don't actually have this, this was just, I'm gonna basically put in the numbers that were there.
Right, yeah, I just hate when I'm trying to figure out not know what I'm looking at.
New numbers for this year. So now we can put real numbers in. Okay.
Okay, so it tells us right here.
Yeah, the big changes.
Oh, but we, we don't have twenty-three.
You want me to go over them? Well, they don't, oh, yes, and they don't, they don't have the preview this year, so we don't really know the, the adjustment. But that's okay, well, once we put it in.
Well, I can go over the changes for you.
Sure.
So they up the emergency apparatus, I think it was one twelve this year, they're upping it to one twenty-five. It's because the new fire truck is expected to be around a million dollars, and they don't think the math's gonna add up by the time they need to spend it. They changed the highways and roads to put twenty additional thousand into the special road projects, out of the bridge and culvert funds, they reduced that one, and then put it into special road projects. They hope to do a detour road this year while the bridge is not being constructed. That way, when the bridge is shut down, that road can also be shut down at the same time, and do that project. For general town improvements, we've added the project of renovating the kitchen. So we're gonna save seven thousand five hundred over the course of two years to do the kitchen, and I think those are the three major changes. But I do have one question for the chief, since we have two cruisers that are the same age, and we're expecting to replace them at about the same time, or are they just still gonna be?
Don't need a car.
Okay, because we were, they still were
Nothing's in there, don't need a car.
Okay. But they were still gonna save the money, because they're intending to purchase one in. Yeah, that's the one concern, is if we have two the same age, won't they need to be replaced at about the same time?
But the mileage is different on them.
It's different from
Yeah, that's funny, because if you look at what we spent for a cruiser, did you see what state police just put on WMUI? Two point six million dollars for a hundred and twenty-one Tahos, a hundred and seventy-one thousand dollars a piece by the time they're equipped.
Wow.
A hundred and seventy-one thousand.
And we need that many Tahos, because why?
So that's fully equipped, right?
Yeah. Has it been decided where the detour is going to be for the bridge?
I think it's Pleasant.
Pleasant, yeah, right, we can't, we can't
Detour's not gonna be accessible for most of it.
Yeah, so.
Correct?
Yeah, you can kind of go detour.
Well, otherwise, why wouldn't we, and then maybe?
So they were suggesting using detour, though, that's what I just heard.
No, 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 they're gonna fix detour when the bridge is out.
When the bridge is out.
But they're gonna go right down Pleasant Street and go down the dirt road, straight.
Okay, alright, I just heard that wrong now. Sorry, never mind.
But then there will be any cars going by, it'll be so nice.
So they were clowned for the quote that Emmett said it'd be three hundred and twenty thousand dollars to do that road.
What was that, I'm sorry?
Emmett estimated it'd be three hundred and twenty thousand dollars to do detour road. So that's where the funds come from.
Did he tell them what roads he'd like to see done?
And when is he expecting to do that, based on the funds that they're showing?
Next year, that's why they accounted for three hundred and twenty thousand dollars between both funds.
Oh, both funds, okay.
Both funds are gonna be spent completely on doing that one project. Which I don't
That's not how that works.
Yeah, because you could have just put that all into, uh, special road projects, and zeroed out the other one for this year, and said it was all for that project. But I think that gives Emmett a little bit more wiggle room on where to use it. In case we can't use it for that project, for whatever reason.
So what is their reasoning for bridges and culverts to? I understand why they took the twenty K out and moved it, but what is their reasoning for continuing to fund it at the fifty-five or seventy-five K level?
Because they were under the impression that we were going to be spending that money out of the fund, because of the way we're gonna have to reimburse, and we're not sure how that's gonna work. And they wanna make sure there's enough money in there for the reimbursements to take place. Or to spend out of it and then get reimbursed, but then go back in the fund.
So they're suggesting fifty-five K into that.
Lucky we'll still, hopefully, we'll still get the money for the bridge. That's scary, that's a scary thought.
Oh, we will, it's, it's already been apportioned to us.
Really?
Yeah.
The, the government won't change their mind?
It's already been apportioned to us.
Oh, okay, okay, yes, sir. I hope so.
If it was, if it was, a bridge project will happen.
Yeah.
Not Webster's or, or somebody's bridge project, specific bridge project. It was just a bridge project will happen, they can say, well, we don't have more for the budget, so we're not gonna do that.
Oh, okay.
But since it's specific, it's, it's already been, it's already been set aside.
Alright.
And that's, that's the same thing with the federal side, where the stuff for like the IRA that is not actually apportioned and spent.
Yeah.
Then new administration can say, well, we're not actually gonna apportion that.
Yeah, that's
So. But if it's already, this is the project, the project has been approved, it has funds set for it, then new administrations can't touch it.
Okay, good, well, that makes me feel good, Dave.
So there's, there's all kinds of weirdnesses, but we, we should
Okay, alright, well, that makes me feel good.
He, let's see, that's, I have public safeties, five, that's probably, that's already there. No, so they went up to, so they put five in it for the public safety building. We had gone down to a thousand, because we had a lot in the safety building.
Public safety hasn't changed. That's was their recommendation last year, and it's the same recommendation. You guys might not have used their recommendation, but that's what they're recommending.
So I'm gonna put their recommendation in. Let's see, town hall building, general improvements. There it is. They are recommending twelve five hundred. Town offices, office equipment and technology, three and ten. So they're suggesting an increase in office equipment from the past two years.
Once again, that didn't change from last year, that was the select board must have changed the recommendations for what went into last.
I was gonna say, how would they even know?
No, that's the same recommendation.
I'm, I'm wondering, like, why is that the recommendation?
Yeah, once again.
I don't think they have a reason, that's what he's trying to say, it's just
I'm assuming that's gonna be in the full report that we haven't got yet, like, why is that your recommendation? Oh. Because normally, there's an explanation of like, this is why we're suggesting this, and the technology was ten, I think that's what it's always been.
But for office equipment, wouldn't you guys need to say what you thought you needed?
So usually, we put in a standard amount for office equipment for replacing computers, copiers, printers, basic stuff.
Yeah, technology.
That would be technology, and it's between office equipment as well.
Technology is still ten. Transfer station, they are suggesting nine. Okay. Boy, we bounced that one around.
Yeah.
I think it was a hundred seventeen last.
Yeah, we went from four
Which one, which one?
To fifty, to a hundred and seventeen, and back to nine.
Oh, yeah, the transfer station, oh, yeah, 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 I was gonna say, what's nine gonna do?
I think the transfer station's all cut up at this point, until we know.
Yeah, I think it's cut up, and we should have some in there to use as the offset when we go to the, the increased budget portions, which in theory happen two or three years from now, when the bonds would become due. Debt Hockington will be getting. Well, that doesn't apply anymore. So, uh, police department indicates gopher funds may be available for basic
Oh, yeah, I haven't changed that part out.
That's a little
That's last year's, I have to delete that out.
Highway and roads budget, special projects beyond the two hundred and one twenty-five, which is not what they recommend, wait, yeah, not what they're recommending?
No.
Need to be prioritized and submitted as warrant articles?
Yeah, it's been there.
Okay, so that's just an old
An old caveat for anything that happens over that, which I guess would explain why they didn't wanna do three twenty for detour road, because then they would have to do a separate warrant article for it.
Okay, so. Looking at the numbers that they have given us, and then quickly, uh, do we have current balances for the funds?
Yes.
And is there anything that has not been funded at this point?
It's noted in that report, you'll see that.
Oh, withdrawals pending?
No, withdrawals pending, which haven't come out, and the deposits pending.
What do you mean by pot, deposits pending?
Um, the amount voted at town meeting, we haven't funded all of the trust funds yet. I think we should, two hundred seventy-two thousand, we need to I think we should, two hundred and seventy-two thousand we need to do before the end of this month. Which I'll be able to as soon as I get six hundred and seventeen thousand dollars from the county.
Well, I was gonna say, is that because we're waiting on the little Jiggy Jig to do that?
So, when you get your tax bill.
Right.
So, so explain this to me.
Okay.
Um, I, I'll start with the first one, cause that should be obvious. The air packs, it's got twenty thousand as transaction pending, so that's the expected balance. Is that including the deposit or that's pending or not including that?
It is including, it's inclusive on the right-hand column.
Okay, so that makes sense then when looking at the highways and roads, why it's not gonna be a problem. Because it's already accounting for the withdrawals that are pending. Okay. Cause otherwise that would be ninety-seven K negative. That wouldn't work.
Right.
Alright, so this is good. So, let's look at the stuff that, uh, changed. So the, the town office equipment, they're suggesting that from the twenty-five-hundred last year, we go up to three thousand. Town office equipment, office equipment.
Yeah, sixteen thousand.
It has sixteen thousand in it?
Mm-hmm.
Um, okay, so that was primarily for a copier and such, uh, which we now have.
We don't need one.
I don't know.
If you wanna give me enough.
No.
Roughly, how much did we spend on it?
Ten.
Four thousand, forty-six hundred.
We were going, that's right.
I, it was way less than we were expecting.
So, so, so it was a few, so it was several thousand, but it was a few thousand. We don't have, do we have like desks and stuff that are breaking or?
We do have several old desks that need.
Well, I know we've got older desks, but do we have, like?
Well, mine's breaking, but.
Okay.
What's it breaking into?
Well, not yet. Well, technically my desk is three desks, but.
What is that?
And I know that, uh, so there'll be a desk, but like it's certainly not gonna blow through sixteen K.
Is paper falling through?
Yeah, I, I don't know.
I just hear there's gonna be some, something that's gonna come out for at least supplies or whatnot for the update to the, uh, clerk's office. For the way they're moving that and adjusting the island and access.
I don't think it's gonna be anything significant, yeah.
But, but it'll be, you know. Some for supplies.
It'll be some, but it won't, it won't be.
So I don't-
It won't be the sixteen thousand dollar mark.
So what is?
So what are you trying to do then?
Why were they saying that we should put three thousand into?
Because they put three thousand in it every year as their recommendation.
So I don't think we need to do that, that's what you're saying, and I'm saying. So let's take that up.
There goes my mahogany guess.
Yeah.
I know, right?
Until Ross starts losing papers through, you're sick of those.
For the sake of making sure that, uh, we keep the line items and they don't get lost or just like, you know, we're never gonna add to it again. I'm gonna suggest that we make it a hundred bucks.
Good idea.
Uh, so, air packs, like that never changes, it's still the same. Uh, bridge and cul- culvert improvements. Uh, we were previously running seventy-five grand every year. Last year we went down to twenty-five grand, cause hey, everything's gonna be covered. Uh, this year they're suggesting that it be fifty-five K and, and they're taking twenty K and putting it in another, uh, road area. Have you heard anything from DRA yet on how often and how cyclical would your funding is expected to be?
You mean DOT?
I thought it was DRA that was gonna tell us how we were allowed to do that for the bridge.
Well, we are allowed, we don't have to have that appropriated because it's a grant. Um, and so DOT is the one that coordinates with the feds to get the money. Usually, in parentheses, it takes maybe thirty to sixty days to be reimbursed.
Okay.
Once you have all the approvals and, and all of that stuff.
So in theory.
I'm still waiting for them to prove the construction company.
But, but in theory, the, what we have is more than enough to cover the, we're gonna spend a little bit, they're gonna reimburse it, we're gonna spend a bit, they're gonna reimburse it. And so, we can easily start the cycle and then make for them.
I think that's probably- Yeah, I think probably what's gonna happen is that, once we pay the initial bills, they reimburse us. We'll have it in the bank. And we'll, we'll probably have to count it and put it in the revenue somehow. And we'll use that money to, for the next bill.
Next installment.
Okay, I know you know this kind of like the back of your hand, but catch little slow marlo up for a second. So, bridge and culverts with the fifty-five thousand, right?
Yes.
Then we look down here on bridge and culverts of, I just lost, ready to go.
Third one.
Two hundred and eighty-one thousand.
And if you go through it, there's, uh, three thousand change, so two hundred and seventy-eight thousand is what's gonna be sitting in it.
Right, so it's. Okay. So, what you're saying is, we really shouldn't need the fifty-five, cause we have two hundred and seventy-eight thousand sitting there, which means-
In theory.
In, in, well, in theory, and because of that, because we, reason we have that much sitting there, had to do a lot with, we thought we needed the money. Until we got approved that they're gonna pay for a lot of it, right?
Right, cause we were, was it twenty-eighty?
They now thought they're gonna have to pay the tw- yeah, the twenty percent.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, so ultimately, we've got that, that's good, and we shouldn't need to put very much on that line item.
In, in theory, that's correct.
It, and there, and like we kinda just talked about on the other thing.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, trying to, I know, I know this is my fourth year, I still see that. So now you're trying to decide, or we're trying to decide, we should say, we're trying to decide, what should that number?
What was the total approved cost for the bridge event?
Um, two million nine hundred thou- for the construction?
Yeah.
Two million nine eighty, eighty, I'd say.
So two, so, let's say three, and we're expecting, what did they say, ten, ten months? What was the construction?
Ten months, ten months.
Ten months?
Yeah.
So if we assume a sixty-day lag of about two months, so basically five chunk segments. Uh, so we would need to upfront then, actually probably more than this. Uh, so, I.
Well, there is good news, um, in the sense that we're getting close to the point that we can claim the eighty percent that we're owed for the engineering costs. So that would-
We'll kinda get reimbursed.
Yeah, that would be two hundred plus thousand.
Okay.
So you could kind of in your mind add that to this number?
So two hundred-ish thousand, and this put us close to that five hundred, which would be the, like, one-sixth, one-fifth range of what we're dealing with.
And I do know, I was planning to have a little more in-depth talk with DRA, which is probably what I'd said, that's probably where that came from. And how to handle it efficiently.
Yeah, that's sort of kind of what I was asking.
Yeah.
Well, without, without, yeah, yeah, without overly stacking and waiting for payments.
It's, it's, it's just, you know, the way that, the way the, uh, town finances work. The, uh, way they do their accounting.
Hey, Ross, for two thousand twenty-four on highway and roads, what was, what were the numbers for Culbert Bridge last year?
Last year, the, the, yeah.
We had been putting seventy-five in.
I, they put it down to zero last year. And moved it all to, uh, their recommendation from last year to zero.
Yeah, the board put in twenty-five.
The board put in twenty-five.
Are you still doing math?
Yeah, cause the, if we're talking.
I need my, where's my calculator over here? I know you've got one there, but my, I need it over here.
So if we're talking three million divided by five, that's six hundred thousand, which we're not gonna have. Will be close to five, but then, this cyclical, but that's also kind of worst-case scenario. Because of sixty days worth for reimbursements instead of thirty, which hopefully they move on, but, yeah, probably not.
And they always tell you a high number when you ask these questions.
Yeah.
I mean, not that you could go.
So.
True.
If, if anything, maybe it should be higher, but then we end up with more in re- Are we crossing a year boundary when we're doing this project?
Oh, sure, yeah.
So this will be, this will be part of two different budgets then.
Well, just cause they-
You know, I don't even think it's gonna be in twenty-five.
Right, but it's, it's gonna cross over the, the fiscal budget year, so it'll be twice. So, what might have to happen is that whatever has come back, like, we do the first payment out of this. It goes through its cyclical jug, and then unless they have delayed paying us back until the new fiscal year. We would have to write a warrant article to take the amount that had been refunded back from the unassigned fund. And stick it into this fund again for the next year to kick off the same cyclical thing.
That's what I'm thinking is gonna happen. You're gonna have to, it's gonna be in fund balance.
Yeah.
Um, if you go into another year, but then.
Okay, but we'll have it, so we can use that to put in and it won't be from taxation at that point, so that's.
I mean, and, and I know it's not gonna be an issue, but the only, sometimes, you know, when you're putting it out to the vote, you hope people vote for the.
Yeah.
You know, and, and people are good, they get it.
Well, I think if it's explained to them too, that's, I can remember years past.
Especially when it's explained as this is not actually from taxes, this is from what we're getting back from the state currently.
Right, exactly.
Right.
Then that, that should be fairly easy.
I think the people would vote for it, that's for sure.
So I'm, I, other than I prob- if it's not, if it's not at the right time, then, uh, if there's more delays, I might not be here to give that presentation.
I was just funny, I was just asking about that.
But, uh, yeah, cause there's this year and then next year.
Yeah, so pay attention, Ross, cause I'm pretty sure I'm gonna be here either.
I'm trying to.
That should not be a problem, uh, so.
Hopefully I won't be pushing updates.
Oh, jeez, don't even, really.
Yeah, don't even.
Man, don't even think of it.
What, when did they say they were expecting to start construction?
I thought it was next winter, wasn't it?
Probably, probably twenty-six, spring of twenty-six.
So there wouldn't actually be payments happening until twenty-six?
Right.
Okay.
I'd like to say it was starting in twenty-five, but.
Yeah, in that case, I would suggest that we, at least for a starter placeholder, put fifty K. Slightly below what they recommended.
Yeah.
But it's, it's still not where we would need to be for that six, six hundred K, but interest will happen. We won't need to be taking stuff out of it, cause it's all gonna be in the budget now. So I think we should start with that as our placeholder. Any thoughts, comments, who wanna go higher, wanna go lower?
No, I think that's a good idea.
Okay. Uh, town hall improvements.
Alright.
There's our next line item in this sheet, so let's see, where is that here?
It's in the second table down.
Yeah.
Is that the one that's like four from the bottom?
Right in the middle table, yeah.
Oh, he's looking here.
Oh, you mean as far as here, now it gets, uh. Town Hall CRF.
Yeah.
Okay.
It has twenty-seven.
So it's got twenty-seven K in it. Uh, they're suggesting twelve point five, uh, over the five thousand that was going in previously in the single increase for twenty-three, which was seventy-five. And you said the increase there was for the kitchen?
Renovating the kitchen.
Okay.
And then there was the other part that I wasn't sure of, cause we're doing, the painting's now gonna be significantly cheaper, we've already saved the money for the painting.
Why is it, what, you mean downstairs, not?
No, the outside.
Okay, why have we saved it?
Because originally we were holding off on that, cause we didn't know if we were gonna replace paint over it or replace it with something more permanent, which not.
And now we're just gonna scrape the paint?
Scrape the paint, paint.
Okay.
And it's gonna be a lot cheaper, cause the prison's doing it.
Prison's doing it.
Okay, do we know, do we have any number for that? Cause I feel like that's really important, I'd rather, make sure we have the money for painting.
Basically, what we have, we have to buy the supplies.
Yeah, well, that's not, yeah.
And so.
Oh, well, I live right up the road.
You know.
Which means that paint will probably last us two or three years, this is probably not gonna be.
Well, I mean, and I don't know, I, I spoke with a fellow the other day and he was very complimentary, it's true.
You can't beat the price.
But, you know, this is a, this is a moving group of people, I mean, they're in, they're out.
Right.
Yeah, the prisoners, you mean, yeah.
Well, that's.
I'm like, wait, then you said they're in, they're out. I just said, hey, if you don't know, maybe they'll send us the ones that are in forever.
The large pending withdrawal is the electric, I assume?
Um, that is the fourth quarter, part of it is a tree and part of it is the heating.
Okay.
Twenty thousand of that is heating in there.
Oh, that's twenty-four thousand, I think.
And then we have, you know, there's like a tree.
That's why it's only twenty-seven.
And then we got a tree removal that needs to happen.
I'm trying to follow what you're talking about.
There's, um.
Sometimes I yep.
And then we have this, um, no, forget it, I'm, I'm long time.
Okay.
Okay. Now, would tree removal come from the town hall improvements, because?
If it's, if it's these grounds.
Yeah, we, cause we really need to do something about that tree line, considering we've had now a second tree fall on town hall off of that tree line.
We have this, I mean, we have the municipal property maintenance.
Yeah, we can use both.
Well, that's why I, I wanted to make sure to mention that, cause that hadn't happened before the CIP, and I think it's getting to the point where we need to do something about it. Before we get another, remember when the tree went through, Dana went on vacation and the tree fell on town hall.
Yeah, I leave for five minutes.
Five minutes, my first day being in charge and a tree falls on town hall, so.
Now, they are our trees though, right?
I think they, I'm not sure where the property line is.
Just barely, yeah, just barely.
I think we need to.
I was gonna say, maybe we should just clean all those trees off on that side.
That's what I was thinking.
I was thinking, and then you're not gonna worry about it, for, we won't worry about it.
So.
And if they're there, I think it'd be cheaper to do it once than to have them come back, okay, next year, and the next year, and the next year. That's my opinion.
So those are the three big things that I think need to come out of that.
Roughly, how much were we expecting for the painting before?
I think we had, what was the figure for the painting?
I think it was like ten thousand.
Yeah, it was like ten.
Ten to fifteen.
So.
I mean, the only thing that I'm not sure if the prison is gonna be able to deal with the cupola, and that needs some repair.
And your, the, the kitchen total cost was how much?
The estimate's fifteen thousand.
Okay. So fifteen thousand.
I'm hoping we can do.
Is that just painting or is that?
There's twenty-seven.
It is, new cabinets.
Probably, let's say fifteen.
New cabinets, new center island, new sinks.
That leaves us fourteen, which should, yeah, recover.
That's been there since I moved to town.
And other things, so I don't think we actually need to raise this a lot, since we're saving that much.
And then the other thought is, is do we wanna replace it with the, the outside with the artificial clapboards that don't need to be painted again?
You mean the concrete ones?
The con- well, concrete doesn't necessarily come great, there's other jobs too.
I would suggest that if we're having the prison do the painting for just the cost of the paint, then at this point in time, we do that. And then we should discuss what we would wanna do next time and start saving for it.
Well, that was the, cause it kinda puts us ahead, if we said, okay, now we're gonna put that painting stuff towards replacing the siding.
Well, I had an estimate for that, so, yeah.
Uh, how much was that?
I've forgotten now, but it was, it was more than what we're gonna pay the prison.
Yeah.
We have to buy the prisoner's lunch.
I said I can make it.
You're gonna make it, are you?
No, Dana said they want pizza, so.
You what?
In light of trying to go with.
They don't get a chance to have them really.
A little bit more, but trying to also get closer towards the five thousand, uh, how about we go with seventy-five hundred between them? Is that?
Seventy-five, what, say that one more time?
So, seven thousand five hundred, which is what we did in twenty twenty-three, when we raised it to get more into the fund. Five thousand is what it's typically been funded at, and they suggested twelve-five.
Yeah, I, I was, I, I'm looking at the wrong thing then. Where, where was we there, I thought?
Uh, town hall improvements, which, I think that, she's right here.
Did you say seventy-five K?
Oh, down here, I see, sorry, got it?
Yeah, the first one in the bottom section.
I'm, I agree.
I'm sorry, middle section. And they're showing that they're going back down to the five thousand. Um, and they're showing that they're going back down to the five thousand after the two increased payments to be, to get the amount for the kitchen. So. I think that doing the seventy-five hundred and knowing that we're spending less still accounts for saving towards the kitchen with the seventy-five hundred.
There was also more information we had now than they had at the meeting, 'cause we didn't know the prisoners were gonna be able to do the painting.
So.
That's why, that's why this is so hard, is if you, you, you're only good as good as the knowledge.
Right.
And when you don't have knowledge-
I mean, I knew the idea had been floated, but I wasn't sure it was gonna happen.
Right, so they're, they're guessing on it, I mean, yeah.
Yes.
And we're guessing, but it's still like, woo!
We're using a little more information to channel their guess into a hopefully better guess. Um, okay, so that's town hall improvements, is, was seventy-five hundred what everybody thought made sense then?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Uh, police cruiser hasn't changed, we probably don't wanna change it, they're recommending leaving it. Uh, fire department vehicles, emergency apparatus, uh, they are suggesting a large increase from when, which we've been continually increasing because costs have gone up.
Their mentality at the meeting was, we need to get that fund up higher, because there's no way we're gonna be able to make the next fire truck
Yeah.
with what we currently have, but they don't wanna do it all at once, so they're just gonna raise it up in for that lineage here until we get somewhere where we're gonna get the fund.
So to put that in perspective, when-
We're gonna have a brand new one.
And then we need another brand new one in twenty twenty-seven to make it, not twenty-seven, twenty-nine.
Is, yeah, twenty-nine is when they were saying they, they were hoping, I think.
Hoping, maybe you'll-
And there's also the one, whenever they can actually get theirs for the replacement, we're supposed to be buying the used.
That's happening this year from when I talk, not this year, next year.
The used ambulance from Hopkins.
Early next year.
You say that, what, what's that from Hopkins?
So we're supposed to be saving money by getting used ambulance from Hopkins?
Oh, 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 okay, yeah, I didn't hear that.
But they haven't been able to get their new ones, so we haven't been able to buy their old ones.
And we haven't, how long are we supposed to, how long are we supposed to have the new fire truck? Three years ago, four years?
That is almost done from what-
No, I know, but how long have we been waiting on it? Three, four years?
Twenty-two.
Well, since I got here.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's basically been three.
So, so my point is, is, is that's gonna come in, we've been fine.
Yeah, you're gonna be in-
The good news is we have good storage.
Twenty thirty-one by the time you get it.
Fire department vehicle equipment, is this, no, emergency apparatus. So that current, will have currently, once funded from this year, seven hundred and sixty thousand in it, of which we haven't paid for the, the new fired, uh, track yet, I think that was four hundred?
I think it's like four eighty-eight.
But it's between.
Doesn't that sound like a low amount of money now?
It's between four.
It does now, yeah.
Yeah, right.
Though, twenty twenty-one was fifty K, twenty twenty-two was sixty-five K, twenty twenty-three was eighty K, twenty twenty-four was a hundred and twelve K, and now we're being recommended a hundred and twenty-five K. If we're talking about million dollar vehicles in the future, that a hundred and twenty-five K is probably much closer to where it should be, what are they suggesting for, for future years?
I'd have to go into the funds, but I do have when the equipment's estimated to be replaced.
They are estimating leaving it at a hundred and twenty-five K going forward. Uh, so, I think I'm inclined to leave that there at this point. And if we end up with something super dramatic, maybe we can revisit that, but I'm inclined to trust that the thing that they probably have the best information for, that it makes sense.
And the prices aren't going down?
No.
Never.
And, and worst case, it sits there and gets some interest for a while, so, um. An- any other thoughts to change that, or?
I don't know, that's my guess. It's total guessing, and, and I, I might go down to a hundred, but who am I? And I don't know what twenty-five's gonna do for anybody, so, whatever.
Well, twenty-five adds up when it's in, you know, put across different places, but
I mean, knowing that we have, when we know what we have, we know, we know that yes, we need to start saving for another one, but if it takes as long as this one took to build, yeah, uh, that's probably ten years out, so. I say a hundred, but that's fine.
So we have a hundred, we have a hundred twenty-five, what do you think?
Well, I kinda think in a way, I, what is the end product, maybe we should save the, maybe just stick with a hundred for now.
So you wanna drop the amount that we're putting in it, instead of increase it to where they're saying that we need to sustain it?
Yeah, well, yeah. I mean, it's all, always nice to have more money.
Let me float an idea.
Okay.
Um.
Dee, we're gonna lose anyways.
No, you're not, I'm only one person.
Technically, you two have the vote, so all you need to do is say, I make a motion.
It doesn't even take a motion, 'cause this is all consensus based at this point, until you get there.
Yeah, but if they make the motion, you can't change it.
True. Um, since it was a hundred twelve, and they're continually working their way up, what if we went to a hundred and fifteen instead of a hundred twenty-five?
Okay, alright.
Uh, let's see, next on our list is highway land building fund, which is the sand shed, uh.
I should probably-
Yeah.
I don't think it, I don't think it was anything that we recommended by CIP.
Public safety building?
Yeah, I don't think they talked about this all show.
So.
What do we have in there now, or, where is it?
But then again, we haven't gotten.
It's the highway land.
We haven't gotten any recommendations.
We haven't gotten any numbers yet.
So how can you, just pick a number out of the, you can't do that, we have to wait for that.
Yeah, 'cause we need to know what building we're putting up there.
It's called highway land slash building, and it's got a hundred thirty-four thousand.
Oh, look at that, that's enough.
More than enough.
Yeah, well, they're not, they have a pencil.
So we had, we had dropped it down to seventy-five hundred and just kinda had kept putting that in. Uh, do we wanna just leave it at the same amount that it's been?
Yes.
Okay. 'Cause I'm sure it will be more once there's a building involved, and not just getting the road up to it, but-
And then how long are we gonna wait on that building?
But we need to know what that building's gonna be before we're putting something major into it.
Now, they're gonna tar that road and everything, right?
No, I, I don't know, I, I hope.
I would assume so, but.
I hope it all matches up with what they're doing, with what they've got at the, the, uh, safety building, so that everything is easy and correct, and more manageable and so on, but uh.
But we haven't seen any plans or consults yet.
No, we have not, we have not.
I think Dana's gone off script, I don't know.
Oh, okay, alright.
Then I'll talk about it, I don't know. Which is why I didn't talk about it, if it had been on this chart, I would've talked to them about it.
What was that?
Okay.
When Dana's going off script, 'cause it's not on the chart we use, but it should be, if we're gonna be talking about the safety building, so.
Sand shed.
So I should add that to the chart.
Yes, yeah.
I'm just going down the list of capital reserve funds.
Yeah, but these are the ones I talked about.
But more or less, there's no recommendation even in here, but there again, they don't probably have any information yet.
It's 'cause they're missing information, so when they don't-
It wasn't listed either.
If it's not listed in from CIP, then we have to figure out how much we think should go in the funds.
Yeah, so we just did that.
So that's what we're doing, going through the list. Uh, next is bunker gear, uh, they've-
I don't think they really ever changed that, so on our list.
I don't think they changed it at all, but that was, um, from our discussion when Emmett, he was expecting that they were gonna have to start replacing all of their stuff.
Well, they should start doing it when they got some money.
And so, it, I believe he said that it was, was it five or something per full setup? But in any case, he was saying that, like, this, basically what's in the fund would cover the most current major people that were going in, but not any more than that, um.
'Cause he was planning, I think he said six sets, yeah.
And so, um, it had previously been at twenty-five hundred, it had gone down to a thousand last year, because there's plenty in the fund, and like, we weren't seeing lots of turnover, and we were told that the equipment was good. So I would suggest that we put it up to three thousand, barring different information that we need something faster, so that we can start saving more towards those replacements that will probably be coming. 'Cause it's, I mean, we had been keeping it twenty-five hundred previously.
Oh, okay.
So three thousand is not that much over the, it's, it's a bunch over the thousand we did last year, uh, but it's not a, a lot over our kinda steady state that we've had previously.
Okay.
Any other thoughts or numbers?
No, that's okay.
Uh, public safety building.
We just did the same recommendation as always, five thousand.
So their recommendation was five thousand, we had dropped it to a thousand last year, but it's always been five thousand previously. Uh, what were the, were there projects associated with that, or just, hey, we should keep s-
It's just there for regular maintenance.
And we, I think we've done quite a bit, even this year to it, they, they replace the floors, different things like that, right?
We had floor replacements, we had sealants for the-
And I doubt we're gonna be replacing the entire building anytime soon.
No, so I just do the, I do what we had last year.
Police building, what is the fund like?
It should set to a thousand, right? Sixty-one thousand, right?
There is it, oh, there it is, near the bottom.
Yeah.
Uh, so we haven't funded it with a thousand yet this year, so it'll be sixty-two point four, um.
I say keep it the same.
Keep it at the thousand?
Yep.
Okay, so CIP recommended five thousand, Mara's suggesting a thousand, which is what we had last year. Uh, we don't have any specific projects mentioned for it, uh, though it has been talked about that there's the roof, which any repairs would come out of for this, but that, a repair like this shouldn't be too, too much.
The one, one little-
But, but actually, like, fixing or replacing the design of the roof would be significant, but I don't think they're going to that soon.
Hopefully, they're not doing that, yeah, right.
But, but that's always been the, this should be high, so that in case, so it's not like,
But I think it's just-
It's not like we don't need to keep it high, but it's already up there.
I think the thousand dollars is the-
Are there any other projects that we expect, we know about for it?
Didn't receive a project, so.
No, I don't think so.
Okay, and they already did things like the generator work, um.
The things like the ceiling or something?
The other thing, the other thing that, uh, should be thought about and why the numbers should stay reasonable, uh, at least what's in the fund, is they do have at least three, and I think it's four different heating units in there, uh, that are all gas, and they also have one central AC for the whole building, all of them are the same age as the building.
Yeah.
Um, so it is, uh, entirely expected that we will need to start replacing them soon. Fortunately, right now, all of the heating systems, at least last year, we were told looked like they were in impeccable condition, so not to worry about them. Uh, but that is something that, uh, we shouldn't be surprised if needs to be done quickly. Uh, so, based on the amount that we spent for the heating system here,
Nice, yeah.
Um, it's not, it's not like we want nothing in there, especially when it's kind of all of those things combined. Um, I don't think we need to be shoving a lot in quickly, but.
But what do we have in the account now?
Sixty-one, sixty-two.
Which would probably cover any one of the emergencies.
And then we'd be screwed if another emergency happened, we'd be there.
And then if another thing happened, we really don't have anything.
Yeah, but that's the way life is.
Which is kind of okay, but that's why you keep the savings going, um.
But do you think this heating system's not really a good example to what they have going on up there? Uh, I don't, I mean, there's two, there's so many zones and so many different things happening.
Yeah, so up there, at least for-
Which, they're simpler.
Yes, up there is simpler, up there has three different, uh, independent gas-fired systems in there, uh, upstairs, and that runs throughout the building for heat. I think they're all boilers, so it's hot water. Um, the air conditioning unit is one single unit that runs and feeds everything through random weird zones, just like this building did. And the, probably the sensible way to handle their building, since everybody's in it different times and, and so on, is not to have one unit that can handle a full building. So if that were to need to be replaced, it would prob- what probably makes the most sense at the time is, well, let's get a heat pump that is for the police area, and then let's get a heat pump that's for like the training area, one that's for the fire area, and so it would be the individual smaller air source heat pumps. Um, we've seen quotes like that for here, with more heat pumps than they would need. So, current price is probably fifty to sixty K to replace it all. Um, but that would replace both the heating and cooling for the whole building, uh, if you did that.
How many years old is that thing?
What was that?
How old is the building?
Seven years.
Well, we just paid the bond last year, and that was a twenty-year bond, so I'd, I'd say twenty-two or three years.
Been paid for us. So it must've been a twenty. Twenty-year bond, yeah.
So what, do you wanna leave it at the five, is that what you're trying to say?
I, I'm just trying to give us full context, the I, I, CIP's recommending five? I don't really have a specific reason to go with theirs instead of the thousand, or against theirs and go for the thousand. Um, 'cause we, we, it looks like we have what we need to handle an incident, but probably not to handle all of the stuff that's expected.
Let's do twenty-five hundred.
So if you wanna do that, I see, I can, we'll negotiate. Well, the thing is, we do have money, you know, I mean, it was-
And it, and it, it's speculation to what, I'm thinking our office building was built back and and we're still running a hard same air conditioner unit, so I just-
Hopefully, we don't, but.
You know, but, but that's just the AC, I mean, heating units are a little different, um.
And like if a heating unit goes-
But we even have our same heating unit, and it, we're probably thirty years old.
Yeah, and the, the advantage that they have that we don't is that if one of the heating units goes, if one of the areas, and we say, well, we're gonna update that section with the heat pumps, and when the others blow up, we'll do that too. Uh, so, it's not quite the same as here, where, oh, nothing's got anything, um, but, um.
And these people over here like, oh, I want to plug in, I don't know why we need to get the little plug-ins, but.
Uh, so, I'm, I'm, I'm okay with the twenty-five hundred.
Okay.
Is that good for you two?
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, next is the transfer station, they're suggesting going down to nine thousand, um.
I don't know where we're at with that right now, I don't know, we talked about like eight.
So it was four thousand all the time, it jumped to fifty thousand for twenty-three, and then it was, uh, again higher in twenty-four, uh, for two reasons. One, they were ex- uh, saying that they were getting ready to replace the recycling center,
Right.
which they've now decided, I guess, doesn't need it anymore, uh, and then, even though it's still falling down, um, and then-
They need the trailers.
There's, well, they did do trailers, there are trailers that are factored in, um.
I think they're all up to date at this point.
And there's other equipment that's factored in as well, like the loader is not too far out, um.
I think everything that's slated to be replaced reas- in the next couple of years has already been done.
It's, it's all been in there.
It's already been works.
And the additional on top of what was, oh crap, we need this now, uh, was put in there so that when we get to the bond payments, we'll be able to offset a chunk, like pay the, a portion of that bond stuff out of the fund, um, so that we can even out the tax load, instead of, oh, a spike for two years when the bond payments are high. So I think that's already there, I'm, I don't have any reason to suggest that we should not follow their recommendation. Does anybody else have any other thoughts?
No, let's leave the nine, and that'll add to this one forty-seven.
Yes.
Yeah, and then at least we, like you pointed out, when we get to this scary part of things, we'll maybe be a little less scary.
Okay, and let's see, police equipment, not touched. Okay, and let's see, police equipment, not touched, um, we haven't heard anything specific. Um, how much is in that?
I think he's feeling pretty good about all his stuff.
Well, most of it's fairly new, uh, he did mention the vests that will be a bit, but he was hoping that he could pull those out of. Uh, this year's budget instead of having to tap the funds. And then, uh, they've also been making good use of, uh, the. I, I wanna call it the circular fund, but it's a.
Revolving.
Revolving, thank you, they've been making good use of the revolving funds, uh, so. They haven't had to dip into this because they've gotten it out of the revolving fund for a lot of stuff, uh, so. I'm, I'm fine with us leaving it the way we did last year as the thousand-dollar kinda placeholder. So more goes in there for when it's needed, but it's not, it's not at the six thousand levels that it was in twenty-twenty-one. When it was expected that like this stuff would be needed a lot.
Sounds good to me.
Sounds good to me.
Uh, highway equipment has a lot in it, um, some maintenance stuff in theory comes out of it.
What equipment, because he owns all the equipment, it's not just repairs.
Apparently, he, if you remember when we talked, apparently we own a few things.
In, in the grade, road grades, I think he gets it.
I also think back in the past, they were trying to save up to get the town its own equipment.
Yeah, they were trying to save up to make it so that the town could start buying equipment.
Can we get an equipment list to see what we actually own?
Good idea.
He told us, but I don't remember it. So, yeah, we should be able to do that.
Wait, well, and does he insure it, or do we insure it?
Oh, I'm sure it's part of our insurance.
Well, so it should be, it needs to be listed.
You know, well, it depends what it is, when it's equipment, it's not vehicles, it's not, it might be plows.
Okay.
It might be.
But we do buy the, buy the plows, the town buys the plows.
You know, things, things like that, but we'll get a, we'll get an inventory of it, so you can see.
Yeah, and he like charges us for, for the cutting edges and stuff like that, so.
Isn't, so that comes out of that account?
In theory, it could come out of this account if it weren't coming out of the budget, typically, it's been coming out of the budget for things like the plowings.
Well, that'd be a good thing to point out.
So, um, but the highway equipment was also the line of, uh, at least when it was explained to me when I first got here. This is so that in, you know, ten years when Emmett wasn't here anymore. We would be able to start looking towards like the first piece of equipment towards a DPW. And then, like, we could rent other stuff and, you know, through budget, it's like, I'm sorry, that's not gonna cover any piece of equipment at this point.
Yeah.
That's a special job, higher for you to run around it and one for me.
Yeah, like, that's just not.
That's not even, that's not even a fancy towel.
No, no.
Okay, but anyways, well, we'll just leave it alone.
So I, I think it's fine just sitting there, uh.
But you're saying though, he should, it should be also if they need some things.
Well, this, this is basically for equipment that we do own to, to, in theory, we could take it. For maintenance there instead of out of the budget.
I just feel like it's sitting there.
But, but, but also for us to purchase equipment if we need it, um, I.
You know how you talk about explaining an account, to me that, that one's a little bit shaky.
We should get.
In a good way, in a good way, but meaning like, like that sixty-five.
Yeah.
If you're, if you're, as we talked the other night, or we even talked about giving them five percent more. But this is maybe my business mind not budgeting forward like you should, but I don't, that seems like a waste of money just sitting there. Or, we, we're not waste, what am I trying to say, like, something you may be able to utilize.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Because the idea that that's gonna get us started to purchasing our own equipment is just kinda a joke, yeah.
Yeah, I, I see like, if, if it made sense that like we were saving towards buying.
A couple hundred thousand?
A plow truck or a, you know, a lo- like something specific.
A grader, a plow, a couple plow trucks or something like that, that's right.
Okay, maybe it doesn't, maybe it's a piece of equipment that we need as a town that. The majority of places that have equipment wouldn't have available. So if you needed to find a different rent agent, that wouldn't prevent you from it, you know, for example, if they were just like, you know, we're, we're retiring.
You know what I think it would be, I would say a plow truck, that would be my biggest worry, a plow truck, not, not a, not a grader, not a loader, you could get the. Stuff rented easily.
Yeah, rentals, yeah, right.
But I would, I think I would worry, plow truck is my big, a big plow truck, meaning, there again, we don't have that much.
So. Do, do we have the description for that fund of exactly what was on the warrant article, I know you often have that video?
Good gosh, good gosh.
He knows cheat sheets.
Well, let's see, let's see if I have managed to keep it where I can find it.
Maybe that will tell us what we need to know.
Hmm, I could go downstairs and get it, I'm sure, I don't have it with me. If you would like me to.
Can we just put a, can we just put a question mark by that, and maybe we could?
Yeah.
Yeah, you can look at it.
I don't know, unless you want to.
We're going downstairs again.
Down in it, highway equipment.
But, if you could come back with kinda what how that works, cause.
Well, I usually have my DRA cheat sheet with me, but.
But then we might be able to do a little bit with that one.
I didn't bring it.
This is what happens when you let Wendy go through your folders.
I know.
Right under the bus she goes.
Well, um.
Dana, I thought those were sacred.
Yeah.
Why don't we let Dana go grab that while we just continue down the line, cause it's not like, we can't just fill it up.
Okay.
Let's hope I can find it.
Don't you hate me, you say, oh, I can put my hands right on that, I, I was asked for something today and I thought, I gotta put my hands right on something.
Maybe we should upload that, the whole wisdom on to the SharePoint, and then we'll always have it in the log.
That would be good, uh, so EMS, DFIB, medical equipment, I don't think it's listed here.
EMS, yeah.
From them, is it?
The DFIB is listed.
Oh, it is, and they're suggesting we stay at six thousand, which it's always been at, and.
Okay.
Oh, you found it, good.
Yep, thirty-four, good, I looked for the six, Dave.
So, I don't know how much or what that is supposed to be or how often, but I'm just gonna trust that they know what they're doing with it.
And if it's got a ton in it, we can pull some out for the ambulance.
Since it's a common and it's always been there, I'm, I'm pretty sure it's only for equipment, not for a vehicle.
Well, an ambulance is in a poe- net.
Um.
See, the common words, are the stuff that goes in them.
That's true, I think it's coming pretty quick.
Yeah, so, a- any reason that anyone thinks we should change it or look at it differently?
No, cause like you make a good point, but, ooh, wait, so you take this, this away from your medical equipment, okay? Okay, I'll get you, take twenty.
No laws this year, none.
Uh, that's a scary number to play with.
Okay, so, uh, next up is highways and roads, uh, which is the construction side of it.
The highway road CR?
Yes.
Which is ninety-seven, withdrawals pending ninety-two, wow.
Yeah, so it's gonna be almost nothing at four grand. Uh, we've always funded it at two hundred for the most part, and we swapped things around a little bit, uh, a couple of years ago. Uh, to go to one twenty-five, and then two seventy-five, and then back to two, um, but it's basically always been two hundred. Um, at least since twenty.
That was faster than I expected. Dana must've ran.
Based on what Russ described to us from CIP. They're really expecting that that should actually be three hundred and twenty, they're just saying that they're mixing? No, cause they've got, they've got highway and roads down to a hundred and twenty, not two hundred.
That's how it's been in the CIP, just cause you guys swapped.
Oh, cause it was swapped the other, other years, cause we were doing more maintenance and less construction.
Again, we're assuming and guessing.
Yeah, um, so CIP is saying one twenty there, so for, for the moment, I'm gonna put. CIP's number in, and then there's preservation. And I'll put. CIP's number in.
Well, they have, uh, yeah.
Just, just so that they're sitting here in front of us, um, but they're saying that they're gonna need three hundred and twenty for. What they have approved, which is Detour Road. They approve funds for a specific purpose out of highways and roads. Which was the one that was as approved by, or as in the CIP. But, this doesn't actually tell us a thing, so the CIP needs like a written.
They have a list, huh, they do, they have charts, that's just the recommendations.
Okay, so the CIP report would have.
It has all the projects that they're listing, what they're doing, and the numbers they're expecting for it.
So.
It's a separate document, that's the summary.
So they're basically saying, yes, you get three hundred and twenty, but we're only gonna put it a hundred and twenty in the fund that is the one that we control. The other two hundred you're gonna have to get from your other fund. Which, if it's a reconstruction project, it should be coming out of highways and roads.
I said that at the meeting.
And they didn't wanna listen to you.
Well, to be honest, they, the way the funds currently are being used, it's usually a hodgepodge of wherever.
And that's what we're trying to fix.
Well, cause it, uh, this is somewhat hard to follow.
Mm-hmm, it's extremely hard to follow.
I think, like, I, I get like, huh. And have an opinion.
So the, so Detour Road was what was told, and that's gonna be for three hundred and twenty.
Three hundred and twenty total.
And is that supposed to happen this coming year, or is that supposed to happen when bridge construction happens the next year and the road is closed?
See, that's the thing.
They didn't probably know that.
Well, they did discuss that, but it really comes down to what's happening with the bridge. And where Emmett feels the funds are gonna be best spent, cause he has three projects that are listed. And if this project is a top priority next year, it might go towards a different project of the list. Which is why it has been a struggle to select which year, cause there's. Detour Road, Lake Road, and Little Hill Road are the three projects that we have numbers on. And it's not necessarily.
Sorry, say that again?
Little Hill Road.
Lake Road.
Lake Road and Detour Road, don't necessarily know when the funding. When is gonna be done with what, but it's a lot of factors that are into it, and all of it's subject to change at the last minute. They're hoping that Detour Road will be done next year, but that's not necessarily.
So are, are all three of those then something he would be approved to use the construction fund for?
Correct, cause all three of them are in the CIP.
Okay.
I added them this year.
Detour, Lake, and.
Little Hill.
Little Hill.
And Lake.
Which he told us Little Hill was now gonna be preservation instead of, uh, construction when he came here and talked to us. So, I don't know, but.
I also know that Detour is the most expensive of the three projects that were.
Right, but it's also the most unused road, I mean, either more popular.
That was also discussed, cause it's not gonna get any cheaper going forward either.
But the most popular roads would be.
So he also has listed, from what he told us, but it's like not in CIP, so it couldn't be construction. Uh, I guess he should add that to the CIP for next year, but he said the upper portion of Pleasant Street would be four hundred K. For the part that wasn't done, I'm guessing that's Long Street to the part that he did at the top of the hill. Uh, and then seventy K would be, uh, Pleasant Street by Detour. So there's the, the bottom paved section there until you get to, to Detour. Um, and he said those were construction, but again, if that's not, if he didn't give those numbers to CIP. And it's not in CIP, then it would not be permissible according to the warrant article for the construction fund. Um. So if those are our three, we've got Detour Road, Lake Road, and Little Hill, at three twenty, one ninety, and three hundred for the numbers that he gave us. I don't know which num- what numbers he gave.
Oh, right, cause we wrote that down last.
Them, but those are the ones that he gave us at the last meeting here. Um, the, and he said that Little Hill used to be four hundred and twenty K, but we put a bunch of work into it, so it's only three hundred now. Um. If any of those are to be done, that would come out of the construction fund. Which is four K, so there's nothing in it, basically. Um, the cheapest of which is Lake Road at a hundred and ninety K. And the most expensive is Detour Road at three hundred and twenty K, um.
But Detour Road is used a lot more than Lake Road also.
Population on Lake Road though is a lot more than Detour Road.
Lake, yeah. Well, yeah, the population, but everybody uses, coming down from Pleasant Street and all, they don't go on the dirt road, they go detouring around Closebury Bridge and all that, so.
Which will be closed, so it just, yeah, to me.
Yeah, so the, the point is that, yeah, to do that when it's closed, I think.
Yeah, well, that's what I thought.
So if that's the case, and if the bridge isn't until the year afterwards. And knowing that's, the funds have to come out of construct, that the funds would be coming out of construction. If we assume for a moment that those are our three options, three twenty K for Detour, a hundred and ninety K for Lake. Three hundred K for Little Hill, uh, then we're looking at. I'm just gonna pull up the calculator. One ninety equals eight hundred and ten, so if we said, oh, it should be about one of them each year. That would be two hundred and seventy K, uh, each year into the fund. And that would, would require starting with Lake Road the first year, having some left in the fund, adding two hundred and seventy K to it. And then doing one of the other two the next year. And that would make sense if it were Detour, because it would be closed from, from the bridge construction during one of those two years. Uh, and then Little Hill would be the other portion, um. I don't think Little Hill can wait for all of it, though. So maybe some of Little Hill gets done along with some of Lake, uh, or sorry, maybe some of Little Hill would get done along with Lake. Uh, if that were happening, um. I don't really know how to digest that, other than based on what they're saying should happen. Um, it should be two hundred and seventy K that would be in road construction. If, if we're saying, whoops, if we're saying that that is what is desired and expected. Now, they're also suggesting that there's two hundred K going into road preservation, uh, which. We had moved, we put it into the budget, so that's really not what's there, they're not accounting for that hundred thousand that's missing and put in the budget.
No, they are specifically saying.
And they're saying that you're gonna use that for this project too, um, which is not the case.
Which I also brought up at the meeting, that they moved some of that bond to there, but they still want that much of the bond.
So, see, what is road preservation at right now? Just because we can't really separate.
Fifty-six thousand dollars.
So it'll be fifty-six K left, and. We've basically, we've basically set the new bar at a hundred because of, we moved a hundred into the budget. Uh, when we did our budgetary change, so.
How, how are we spending? Well, what's it, a hundred and eighty thousand, about?
What, what?
Well, if you, if you, if you put these two numbers together, does it count?
About a hundred and seventy.
Yeah, what did I say, one eighty?
Yeah, one eighty, uh, the.
That's pretty close, my math will be fine. That's, that's a lot, withdrawing, when, when it, is, is, that's all coming out this month?
That's the fourth quarter withdrawal so far.
For pavement.
And, and the preservation shouldn't get that, shouldn't get a whole lot more, cause it should be coming out of the budget, cause he's got some left in his budget.
Okay.
Um, the. But the construction makes sense, like, that's what it's been, um.
Well, you just, what do you think?
So let's see, right now, we've got three, they're suggesting a total of three hundred and twenty goes in. Last year, we funded three hundred in. So if we put highways and roads at what it probably should be for the next three years. Based on the calculation of those three projects.
Just two hundred and-
Just two hundred and seventy K. Then that would leave, from their suggestion of a total of three hundred and twenty K. That would put fifty K into road preservation. So if we're just moving the line items to do what they're saying they want to do. And in theory, that actually works out really well, because the operating budget is what should be getting used. Road preservation is only for overage, and he's, he's mentioned that, uh, we take the chip seals and stuff out of that. And that we weren't gonna do that this coming year, and that's usually a hundred K. So I think that's actually a fairly reasonable place. Adds the extra fifty K in, that would go in addition to the fifty K, so there'd be about a hundred and six, a hundred and seven K. Sitting there as an in case we needed overage, uh, for road preservation. That gets to an interesting question that I think we need to, well, first, I'll just stop there for the numbers. Do those, how, what do each of you think about the numbers? Cuz we've talked about them a bunch.
You've got, you, you, you took that from A to Z, so I'm thinking we're good with what you just said. I mean, if you had, if somebody said you didn't take that out, or we don't wanna take that out, then, then, yeah, okay. So I, just like you said, it kinda backed, like I always say, backing into a situation. It seems like it should work out.
Okay, so-
There's never enough.
For three years, for Little Hill, Detour, and?
Lake Road.
Lake?
Yeah, Lake, Lake Road.
Lake.
He was given the okay to fix it this year.
As projects approved by the, but not approved in the construction fund. Hope that's not what I wanted. Years as-
No yawning, no yawning.
It's getting late. It's like twenty minutes to my bedtime.
Me too.
What time you gonna bed?
Like nine, nine thirty.
So.
No, but that's what daughter says, I'm lucky to go to bed by one.
So the question about the road preservation fund.
I'll have to get up at five thirty there.
Since we now have all of our descriptions, uh, can you read the description for the road preservation fund again, please?
Annual road preservation.
That's it?
That's what it says.
So-
It's a good definition.
What, we have now moved away from using it as annual road preservation and using it as the extra for annual road preservation. I would like to get ideas. And of course, I was expecting that Emmett would be here, so he could give us his thoughts on it as well. Uh, but the, my thinking here is that rather than annual road preservation. We would actually ask the townspeople to discontinue the road preservation expendable trust fund. And create a new fund that is for, uh, road maintenance overage and, uh, emergency use as approved by the select board. So if a road washes away, it's there. And we don't have to worry about trying to say, well, you can't use that fund because it's this or that. And it also makes it very clear that that's not a fund that should always be getting taken out of every single year. Because we've moved it all into the budget. We've given him a really large budget. Because this isn't what's supposed to be needing to be used anymore.
Fine by me. I, I didn't think to simplify this.
I think it simplifies it, and that's my point. But-
That's anyways.
I mean, it, it, and you're entrusting, you're entrusting the situation to begin with. And you get all the information from the person you're entrusting. We could sit, we could sit here and do circles around where the money is and how you can figure out how to use it to maintain the roads. And that's what he's hired to do, to maintain our roads with this budget.
Yeah.
And upgrade them, maintain them, upgrade them, and keep it safe, whatever, in the plowing.
Yeah. So I'm, I'm trying to make it same, so that it's easy, and he looks at, this bucket does this, all of this does this, that's all I need to think about. Unless, you know, a road washes out or something.
And then that's where your, your, your thing to preserve part would be, your, your emergency fund.
Yeah.
And then if he gets to where he doesn't need that emergency fund, can that can be grabbed, or no?
Well, no, no. So what I'm thinking is, you remove road preservation and make it the, uh, emergency road, uh, uh, emergency road fund. And so then the phrasing would be something to the effect of, uh, budget overages or emergency si- uh, situations for roads as approved by the select board. And-
That makes it simpler, a lot simpler.
Well, yeah, because even, even when you ask him to do it.
That way, we're not saying it's gotta be like a FEMA thing, we're not saying it's, it's, this takes care of it and it's the in case fund. As opposed to the let's always use it fund.
No, I think it's keep it simple is the best idea.
We all don't, hey, hey, prices will go down next year, you don't know. But they also could rocket for some, whatever reason. So it makes it a little less, um, he might be able to do a little less work if there, if it goes up. But at least he knows what he's got there and the projects he wants to do and get them done.
Well, I mean, he's, he should know that either way, but-
No, no, but, but, but when you start grabbing, thinking, oh god, I gotta grab here and I gotta do it this way, I, I-
Yeah.
Maybe I'm misunderstanding you, but that's what I'm understanding as you're saying. And I've felt this way anyways, cuz-
So, did, does that make sense? Would we need to do that in order to use the fund that way? Or does it just make sense to do that, to like, very clearly state that it should be used that way, or is that more of a policy? Like, how should we look at that? If that's where, and we obviously need Emmett's feedback first, but-
Mm-hmm. Well, I guess, and I'm gonna come, probably come by from a long way, but I'm not sure whether the way the funds have been used is really the way that the town intended them to be used. And I think you agree with that. The, first of all, the capital reserve fund, the highways and roads, you should be thinking about projects in the future. That's the ten year plan thing. And I know what, what you're dealing with, I got it.
And, and that's where we're trying to do that.
And I know that's where you're going. As far as the road preservation, it's so wide open. You know, it's just very difficult, you know. I've never made so many withdrawals in, in, from trust funds in the entire time that I've worked.
Really? None of you other towns, you never did?
Oh, they never would, they never would use them for that.
Really?
No.
It's just a, it's a lot of step.
Yeah.
It would be a thing.
Yeah, right, yeah, right.
Because, because all that is time and money. If you think about it.
Yeah. I mean, and I've said it before, you have a savings account, you put money in a savings account, and a week later you come and take it out, so you haven't gained any.
Yeah, yeah, right, you haven't gained any interest, yeah, right.
And I think that's probably, it's, it should be so you have a, a plan. And I know this is, I'm just, I'm just giving my opinion, it doesn't mean anything, but, um-
No, it means something, the point.
So if, so if we were to go down that route, we should look at-
But I think if you went, if you went that way, you don't want it so restrictive that you're, you're paint yourself in a corner.
That's right, that's what I was, yeah.
So you do wanna-
That's why, I'm trying to keep it fairly light on road overages and emergencies, but-
Yeah. But then, the other part of that is, okay, what is, what is an emergency?
That's why, as defi- as approved by the select board. That way, you know, you don't have to wait for FEMA who doesn't actually declare it or something.
Right.
No, that's, yeah, selectmen should make the choice. Yeah, I'd say a hundred percent for that.
And I, and I don't know, this was done in twenty eighteen with the road preservation, and I'm curious of really what the idea behind it was.
Probably wanted, in a sense, to preserve something that didn't need to be taken to another level. Maybe?
Uh, I'm going to go out on a limb, because most of these were done to stabilize tax rates. That it was, you're gonna get X amount a year, we don't care how much you use. That way, you can do a little less this year, a little more the next year. Figure out what projects make sense. But that turned into, let me try to use all of it. Or I'll do however much you fund, which, then there's no point in having a fund. So.
And I think obviously every select board is trying to stabilize tax rate.
Right.
Yeah, oh, yeah, well, most.
If they're any good, I mean, um-
Except if it was a spend.
Dana, have you, have you seen the news sometimes?
So, okay.
But I think the wording's very important. I guess that's where, you know, and I agree with it.
So I guess, uh, since I don't expect that we'll see him at our next meeting, unless he's trying to, uh, encumber funds. I guess try to see what he thinks of the idea of making it like, this is gonna be a true overage, but you'll still be able to use it, because it's gonna be an overage account. And that way, it should be easy for him to understand.
But it's not, it will not be his choice.
Correct.
Whether he can use it. He would need to come to you and say-
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah. Les, can you explain that to me?
Cuz in theory, I think, in theory, everything's gonna be in- In theory, everything's already gonna be in the budget.
No, don't worry, my trick.
A lot higher.
I don't think anybody could do it as well as Dan or Ken.
All right.
And with the, as, as we mentioned, the, uh, his, his budget portion. He had requested the five percent on a small portion, which he said was two hundred and thirty-six K. Which would have brought that portion to two hundred and forty-eight K, which is a twelve K increase. And we applied a five percent brush to the whole thing, which was a twenty K increase. So we, we've given him more into the budget to, again, make it easier to just do what you need and take it out of the line as you mean. If he thinks that line items should be split up more to make it easier for him to calculate, I'm all for that. That's more transparent. If he wants to leave it as it is for single buckets, so it's easier to say, state an account that's all of these things, I'm okay with that too. But I, I think we're in a good place. I just wish we could have talked with him more about it. So hopefully we'll get to do that. All right.
Dave, I've really been trying to keep track of what is happening, but I might need to talk to you at some point to make sure that-
Just for what the numbers are.
Yeah.
So I'm, I'm putting them in the sheet as we go, so.
Thanks, I appreciate it.
The sheet is current.
Yeah.
Oh, we were revisiting highway equipment, cuz that's what we sent you down to do.
Oh, yeah. And then you threw me a curveball.
Yeah, that's right.
And now, we're, we're an hour ago.
And you got four minutes, cuz it's not a call.
Two minutes till I go to bed.
So I hope you can follow.
Oh, Jesus.
Uh, it was to-
Purchase highway?
Purchase highway equipment.
Okay. So for now, I'm gonna suggest we just leave it at the thousand and we take a further look at that.
And maybe utilize that money instead of it just sitting there, cuz we're not gonna buy much, sixty-five thousand dollars.
Yeah, either, either utilize it or figure out what it's supposed to be saved for and then have CIP plan for it next year.
Okay.
Either one.
No idea. I've never heard of anything.
What do you think taking this side?
They don't even look at that fund.
Exactly, but if we're saving for a reason, they should be. If we're not, then we don't need sixty-five grand, cuz they're, they're, they're there for anything that's over ten, right?
I think Myra Lo was kind of alluding to that earlier.
Uh, okay, so next on our list, to get down the capital reserve funds, but we're almost done. Uh, Fire Department, Mobile Communications, it's always been ten, looks like that's what they suggested again. I don't see any reason to change that, much like the DPD regular stuff. Any other?
No.
Okay.
Again, that's, that's one of those lines you don't like really crossing.
Reappraisal. I thought we were closing that, but I didn't see notes that we did.
Don't we have to keep a reappraisal all the time? Do we pick up stuff all the time?
Well, that's, that's been budgeted.
It's been in the budget, not trust funds.
So there was about a thousand in it. There, there's twenty-five hundred slated to go into it, which would make it thirty-five hundred.
Oh, right, that's one of the ones.
Are we, and I think that was because there was supposed to be like, an extra payment at the five years or something?
Yeah, the last year is your expensive year.
Okay.
And the next reappraisal is twenty-eight.
Okay. And so we're basically expecting that it'll be the extra.
We do have a reappraisal line in the operating budget, but that's because they do one fourth of the town, the other four years.
And so this is basically times four or times five gets us to the amount.
Yeah, and last time it was, uh, I'd have, we do have a contract for that. Last time, I think the, the final payment was like thirty thousand or something like that.
So cut in half, we're about fifteen. This will give us about ten over four years, almost thirteen. But there's some in the fund by the end of five, so I think leaving that at twenty-five hundred probably makes sense. Any other thoughts or numbers?
Sounds good to me.
Cemetery Improvement Fund, I think is one that we don't, can't touch. I just have zeros listed forever on that.
Yeah, that's the, that's the law where Brandon can only spend the interest.
Yeah.
It's got a thousand bucks in it, so that's your, that you can only spend the interest, cuz it's nothing, but that's okay.
Well, I think they, yeah, we usually don't put money in that.
Yeah, we haven't.
Yeah. Um, the interest is only like sixty-eight dollars.
That's pretty good for-
That's what I was gonna say. Sure it wasn't six dollars and eight cents?
Does it only have a thousand dollars?
Yeah, it's got one thousand two hundred and thirty-seven dollars.
Really? Wow, that's a pretty good interest rate then. So I, yeah.
I took them in the garbage while you were downstairs. Just wanna make sure, keep your toes, you should have memorized it.
Dude, that's a lot of money.
That is a lot.
You know, Neil would have memorized all that stuff.
Okay.
We need to know where that, where they get that.
The interest came from is the one that has twenty-seven.
Oh, okay.
That makes a little more sense.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Okay. Um, so then there's, uh, tax maps that we discontinued, so we never need to look at that again. Uh, then Bicentennial Trust, we brought back and stuck a hundred bucks in it, just so that we were actually doing something instead of making it suddenly later. I still think that's the right thing to do. Ah, the Cemetery Trust is the one that we can't use in interest.
That's right.
That's a thousand dollars.
So the Cemetery Improvement Fund.
Now what? Okay, whoa, whoa, whoa.
What's that one?
The Cemetery Improvement Fund, I think, was the one we took money out of the trees and we just took out it.
I thought it was, I thought we took out of that for the, um, the headstones, not the trees.
But they cut some trees down too, I think.
So how does this get funded? Should it get funded?
Can we back up?
Yes.
Okay, sorry. So the, the one, the one that is making the interest is the twenty-seven thousand dollars.
Yes.
And that's the one you can't touch.
That's the one you can only use the interest.
I'm outta town, yes.
And just, I know you probably told me this last- And just, I know you probably told me this last four years, why?
It's for perpetual care.
It's, it's a state law.
So sixty-eight dollars.
And I would like to make sense to it, but it doesn't make sense to me. It's a state law.
That's an awful feeling to have twenty-seven thousand dollars sitting there.
That you, it's, it's.
That you cannot use, only with the.
Basically, when somebody dies, they put, oh, I'm gonna put ten thousand dollars in this fund for the rest of all existence.
Okay, 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 okay.
And you spend the interest like a, and like a charitable trust.
Be used for like maintenance, like a perpetual.
Is that when cemetery plots are bought, they're no longer, they haven't been getting required to be put into that fund.
Correct, the interest doesn't amount to.
The intre, the, the fund does not grow.
Because back in the day, we'd grow, then you'd have the interest to maintain them.
Right.
Okay.
Other towns I know have got more money.
It's coming back to me that we talked about this before. But I forgot.
Yeah.
Okay.
But also, more towns have more cemeteries than we do.
Well, I'm thinking about like just being in the conquered one. So it's just kind of there, but yeah, it's kind of crazy compared to like anything else around here.
So, okay, um, so should we be looking at the cemetery improvement fund? And if not, how and why did it get funding before? Or should we be looking to close it and make sure that there's always a large enough budget?
I guess the cemetery improvement fund, the only thing that you might wanna, I mean.
Well, you also.
You've used it for.
It's been nothing for formations. We basically never put into it.
Yeah.
But it now has.
I think, I think having some money set aside for stone repair is not a bad thing.
I think that's a good idea, and trees you can get out of property.
Or.
Yep.
Replacing a fence.
So should we, since we just did all of that, should we put like a hundred bucks in it as a placeholder? Or should it be more than that, so it starts to get fund in it?
Maybe five hundred bucks?
When Brenda spoke with us, did she talk about more trees and we put it in the operating budget?
Yes.
Is that what happened? Okay.
And that's part of when we get into the overall in municipal property maintenance. We should talk about raising that and reducing the, but that's not.
Why don't we bring it to like around fifteen hundred, so why don't we put two hundred fifty?
What do you think?
Yep, that's fine, that's fine.
How much did we spend on the stones?
I think it costs something like, I'm just pulling this out of my head, I'm not sure, five thousand dollars maybe.
Okay.
That much?
Which actually wasn't, I mean, that was all the cemeteries.
But isn't that what we're talking here?
I thought we were just replacing, like fixing two stones or something.
No, no.
Oh, okay. Is this where you kind of start feeling like we're like the roads?
Dana, they made it about.
If it's something.
I made sure I had mine fixed.
It's those wonderful granite stones and later.
Or if you need to replace.
That's one.
The perfect one.
Is that the thing that eventually that should be, if we handle that?
So it's only at twelve hundred now, so do you just do five hundred? And get it, do a little bit like that to build, because.
What are you talking about?
I think it's something that you wanna get to a steady state. I don't know what that steady state should be.
All right. We're talking, Dee, we're talking about the cemetery improvement, the twelve, like if you're on this.
Oh, the twelve, okay, yeah, the twelve hundred and thirty-seven dollars.
And it is the fact that twelve hundred doesn't buy a pair of sneakers, so.
Yeah.
Maybe, maybe off the, no, just okay. I'm just thinking if we wanna try to grow that a little bit for repairing fences and, I would, I would think maybe put five hundred in there then.
So remove the twelve, twenty-three, and just put five hundred?
No, 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 it's how much you're gonna add to it.
Oh, okay.
What, were you thinking more?
Do you like the five hundred? Or do you like the previous two fifty? Do you like nothing?
It's whatever you guys want, it's okay.
I, I think since we don't have a specific thing being saved for currently, I think the two fifty makes more of a sense, since I was thinking, we've never really been funding it, let's put the placeholder of a hundred. So I think the two fifty works.
Okay, sold.
And.
Who we want.
American.
And it's not necessarily that like, something specific has to have everything there. Cause if it's a fence, it could also be, you know, municipal property, sort of thing.
Yeah, that's true. Use it in a different kind.
So.
It's really more for the headstones.
Actually, is it even for the headstones? Cause that's not improvement, that's maintenance.
I feel like improvement is, oh, we're gonna paint this fence this year.
Say we wanna redo the, the walking area, the roads.
So what's improvement then? Then what's improvement? Maybe more in the grass more? Making it level?
That's maintenance. Well, so if you wanted to like level it out.
I know, I'm trying to.
We want a mausoleum, I know.
That means obnoxious.
Like, I could, I could see like if you were trying to add paved blockways or something.
Yeah, paved blockways.
That would be an improvement, not maintenance.
Yeah.
So maybe we shouldn't be funding this.
Or a new fence, instead of a, or, or put up a new fencing area.
Yeah, to like add a fencing area.
Who's pulling this late at night?
I think I'm actually in the.
I love the cheese returning.
I, I think I'm actually back to, we shouldn't fund it, because we, we've never funded it.
I said it.
And.
So he's gonna leave twelve hundred dollars in?
Should, should we talk, I think we need to talk to Brenda about it.
What?
Ask if it makes sense to close the town. Cause I think we were talking about that last time, like, let's use it, since it's there.
Thank you.
But everything that's being done could also be covered under municipal maintenance.
Unless she can think of something we're missing.
So.
And that's what you're literally saying.
Well, it is a truck, but I can't, yeah, no, I think it is four one four.
Is it?
That might be a ride, Dee.
Yeah, gee, don't go away. You think it says four one four?
I think it does. I can't see, because the parking lot isn't really well lit and I'm blind. So that covers capital reserve funds. Don't slip if you go out that way.
I didn't. I had, I was gonna fall, go underneath the little.
You scared me when you came in, Myllo. You were trying to keep her safe.
Yeah, that's it. I thought it was.
Okay. So we're gonna ask Brenda about that money.
And if it makes sense to discontinue it.
Yeah.
Okay.
Cause we just, I don't, I feel.
Cause we're, we're trying to cover this stuff in municipal maintenance, it's in one place.
Let her go, she's gonna leave for the night.
Do we need it?
And why?
So I'll just go through a couple of basic ones that are sitting here. Uh, forest fire, just leave it the same. Uh, legal, leave it the same. We have stuff we haven't, we haven't pulled out of the legal fund.
We haven't, no.
We've just, we've overdrawn the budget some, but, uh, we've never had to use the, the legal line.
Yeah, it's a good thing.
How is the welfare? Do we need to keep putting as much in it?
You know, welfare is, you, you don't, you don't know. I mean, you know, it's one of those, and you don't have a choice.
Let's put this way, it's been a quiet year, but recently.
Until, until recently.
Yeah, so we've got almost twelve grand in it. We weren't putting anything in, and then now we've, we were, we've been putting a thousand.
I don't think you need to put anything in next year, I don't. And we've not pulled anything out. I think I'm a little over on the budget on welfare too.
So I'm gonna suggest that we stick a hundred dollar placeholder there, just so that people don't forget that we're adding to welfare. Police vehicle maintenance has, was five thousand in twenty twenty-one. Has been a thousand for the past three years. Police. That would be the ETF, so the police one.
That's ten thousand.
It's got ten K in it, well, ten-three. They've also used the revolving fund for stuff, and they have mostly new vehicles. How about we drop that down to seven fifty? That'll give them a, roughly even eleven in there by the time stuff happens. That way we're still funding it, but it's.
It's the ETF thing?
Yeah.
That's okay.
Okay.
I'm going. What'd you say it was, seven fifty?
Yep. Then there's the highway, wherever that one actually is. What did we discover that that one was? The highway ETF?
Let me refresh my memory.
Gosh, why don't you know this stuff yet?
I told him Neil would have this all memorized.
I know. I know. If you're looking at Neil, they want him, but he's stuck with me. Uh, let's see, highway.
Dave, I don't think he'd want his job.
A lot of want his job.
No, I think you're in a really good spot.
Look at the fun people you have to work with, come on now.
Oh, no, I love this job. Highway, what am I looking for?
ETF.
ETF. That is unanticipated highway expenses.
So again, basically the overage.
Yeah, so that thing we were talking about.
You were just talking about that.
So can you put that in preserves?
You mean put it in a capital reserve fund?
Was there an inforobie road in there?
Or?
No, cause it's not where we're putting the present, the, whatever you, the overage.
If we removed preservation and stuck it all in.
Yeah, that's what I was just trying to say.
Would highway be the fund that we were saying that we wanted?
We wanna look up who the agent who spent is.
Well, the selectmen are, yeah.
Oh, they are definitely.
You know what? We could just remove both of them and create one fund that said that it was specifically for overage and emergency use.
Yeah, I don't think this is detailed enough.
So let's, let's look at doing that so that both sets of funds become available.
I can, that's another one of those accounts that.
There.
Why?
Yeah, so we took, kind of, I don't know, thinking about doing away with preservation, and doing away with this ETF, and putting them together as overage.
As what?
Overage.
Overage.
Yeah, or.
I don't know what you said. That was funny, I thought you said some funny word.
We'll have to come up with a good title.
That's right.
Yes.
Something classy, something Webster title.
Okay. We gotta.
That won't take long.
Okay. Just two fire department equipment, which I think they probably listed.
They may have put that in there.
Equipment ETF, forty-two.
No, they didn't, yeah.
There's a ETF.
Department equipment ETF.
That's the first.
And that's forty-eight thousand dollars there.
Cause that's been a five thousand every year, which is none of theirs. Doesn't match any of the, cause those are, these are all capital reserve funds. So what is this one supposed to be for?
I am looking for, uh, that's an ETF?
Yes.
Unanticipated equipment expenses.
Okay. Fire department equipment. Okay, so this would be like stuff that's on a truck or like the.
Say, yeah.
Something happens with the.
Like when the hose went.
Something or another. And so that is currently at forty-two K. It's had five going into it. Do you know what we've spent out of it?
I, to my knowledge, we have never withdrawn from that.
Which is surprising, because I think we could have used that.
Yeah, for some other stuff they've been buying.
About the pump went for the fire truck, we probably could have used for that, for that.
That's what happens when you have too many of these things.
Probably, but he had it in, in his budget, the equipment line, so.
Yeah, we, we had the funding in the budget, so. Well, if it's not recommended and there's nothing specific for it.
Hundred dollars.
Well, I was thinking we drop it to a thousand, because, you know, a pump or something on a fire truck's never gonna be cheap.
Right, but, oh, I don't know, I shouldn't say that, I don't think the public would have noticed for sure.
I would hope not, but.
No, no, but I don't even know, I'm trying to think. I don't even know what the pump would be, the fire truck.
So.
Probably more than what you think.
I would suggest we drop it from five thousand to one thousand.
Sold.
Any other thoughts?
No, that sounds good to me. At least, cause save a little.
Compensated absences, we've always said, hey, it looks like we've got enough for the past few. So at least last year, we dropped it to a hundred as a placeholder. How are we looking for that at this point?
Well, we've got.
Which one are you talking about?
Phil Mitchell.
Which is the primary, but.
Which is, um, going to be a ring time two.
Yes.
Let's see, how much we got in there? Sixteen, that should be enough, I think.
So is the hundred dollar placeholder probably still good?
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to tell you what to do.
Then the preservation, which we already talked about with the others, municipal property maintenance was.
No.
That is another one we should probably.
They did not. Okay, how much is staying in it?
Maybe fourteen in there now.
So there's fourteen in it.
Oh, there it is.
And. So there's several things that we can use this for, for example.
Cutting trees.
Painting the building, cutting trees, uh, et cetera, rebuilding a fence. So all of those things can come out of municipal property maintenance, as far as I'm aware. Can you read the thing just to make sure that I'm, they haven't made it more.
Difficult.
Difficult than the title.
Well, we try to do it. Municipal property maintenance, related to annual municipal property maintenance.
Good definition, man, there was a setup nice thinking that one.
Okay.
Well, that's what went on to the, the warrant.
So, yeah, I think, I think we're fine using that for any of our stuff, that we wanna use it for. Uh, and just making sure that it's kind of leveled out for things. Uh, we had, it was twenty-five hundred in twenty-one, five thousand in twenty-two and twenty-three, seventy-five hundred in twenty-four. I think that was because we were thinking about this building and its paint, or something of that nature. The thing that we can look at is, uh, we did talk with, for example, Brenda, on both parks and rec and I believe cemeteries about additional tree work, uh, which was in the budgets. So let me go find those. Cemetery seems to be first. Uh, so it was add thirteen thousand for trees. Uh, so we could remove thirteen thousand out of the supplies and repairs line of cemetery, uh, for, if we put that into the, the fund instead. Or expected it to be able to come out of the fund. Does it sound to people like we wanna do it that way, instead of having it in a budget that bounces?
Let's go that way.
The easiest way, I think the, the.
So I'm going to remove thirteen thousand, which is listed for the, uh, trees, out of the supplies and repairs of cemetery. And go back to our funding. And, uh, I'm just gonna set it at fifteen, since we don't have anything other specific. Uh, but we've been putting into it repeatedly. It used to be twenty-five hundred. We built the fund up a little bit. So fifteen is the thirteen plus another two thousand that's being funded into it. And that was cemetery. And the other one, I believe, was Parks and Rec that mentioned that. Let me go back and. Note that, uh, thirteen K trees. Moved to the municipal property ET, maintenance ETF. And let's find. And these parks, there it is. Uh, parks was another three thousand for trees. Which we can take out of the maintenance line. Let's see, so that was fifty-fifty, so it would be. Interesting. So it's, oh, cause it was, it's. For no reason. So if we take three thousand, it would be twenty-fifty. Three K. Three K and two. And it's E T F for trees. Go back to start. Warrant articles, so if we added another three, that would be eighteen. So now we moved all of it over to municipal property maintenance and the fund, so if there's a slight overage, if there's a slight underage, it will stay in the, in the fund and continue to be there. And that will help smooth things out and the budget will make a little bit more sense to people instead of being up forty percent, down thirty percent, etc. Which brings us to the technology fund, they chime in on this, probably, I hope.
It's for the server, the next server replacement.
They did not. At least I don't see it, oh, there it is, uh, they're saying, they're suggesting staying at ten thousand the whole way through. See how much is in it?
Thirty, two thousand.
Has thirty two in it.
And we still have.
What was the last quote that we got for the server? Uh, I think it was ridiculous, but.
It's like twenty?
I thought it was higher.
Higher?
But in any case.
I remember you said it was ridic, you thought it was ridiculous, I remember that.
Because we're supposed to start saving for the next server, because how long will the server last?
Yeah, because there's also the server at the, the police station that we'll have to be saving for.
Yeah.
Can't that come out of his budget?
So, well, they do actually have a line item for it, but again, that's another, like, this shouldn't hit the budget as a thirty thousand dollar thing.
Right.
For one year.
Let's do five.
I think five is probably safe, because we've been doing most of what we, we've been doing our upgrades, the, we do still need to replace the server that's in this building. So, which will take a good chunk of this fund away. Uh, but we've done a good job of taking steps and continually updating all of the very old and outdated computers that everybody's been using on a daily basis.
And we're going to need to purchase a bunch of computers soon, too.
A bunch?
At least two or three.
Okay.
Is this with the desk?
Town clerk. We need another one in the town clerk's office for the deputy town clerk. And then we're going to need, I think Karen mentioned she wanted a new monitor today for her desk, which isn't that bad.
All right.
And then we're going to need to replace the assessor's computer at some point, because that's one of the older computers that we moved over from one computer, I think Karen, this is a little, Karen and Wendy's computers haven't been replaced yet.
Wendy have the new computer?
You sure, what was last time we replaced it, I don't remember we ever replaced it.
Some, some, I think Wendy's is the one that got taken off of the replacement desk because there was a problem.
Because I think we have Karen, the town clerk's computer needs to be replaced still. Are the two oldest computers and the assessing computer are the three oldest computers at this point.
Yeah, I would agree with that.
So.
We'd have to, we're tending to do a little bit of snooping around on Thursday, but, well, we don't have any electricity, so we're going to get our flash. But. That's what I think are the oldest computers, and I think we have a lot of printers that are going to need to be replaced, the small ones on the desks are pretty old. And I know the town clerk's going to need new printers for her office. Because they're no longer supporting those Lexmars through the state, because they used to be purchased through the state for, specifically for motor vehicle, but they're not doing that anymore.
Really?
Those are pretty old, because they're older than the ones we had in Salem, the ones in Salem were old. And those aren't cheap printers.
No, no, I'm sure they're not.
So. There's two ways that you can kind of look at computer systems like this, we, we've got a technology fund, a, a technology line item.
But it could also go off as a.
That, that we've been using. And. Let's assume there's, say, three more or so, so I think the average has gone up to about eight hundred, sometimes we get better. And I think the average has gone up to about eight, eight fifty or so for a system. So if it's three systems, then about twenty four hundred or so, twenty five hundred total. Our budget line item is fifteen hundred, so maybe we should look at making that, actually, no, I, I don't think we should change the, the budget line item. I, I think the fund makes sense for that, but we should fund the fund. The, and then we've basically, over the past two and a half years, will have changed out all of the systems in the offices. The advantage to that is we just, it's in the budget, we buy it and we replace it and we go on. The downside to that is from a support perspective, everything becomes different models. Which is not bad for a small town, because there's a few here and there, if one thing fails, we'll replace it or replace the oldest one. Um, so that model kind of works for us. The other model is save up to buy, like, this is our fleet, they all match, everything is easy to maintain or swap parts. Have a spare system that you can swap stuff in and out while you order another part to bring it back up online, that sort of thing. Normally, that only makes sense if you've got an I T staff person to do those swaps, though, um, which we don't have. So, but my point in bringing this up is, either way, we're going to want to save for them, but if you're looking at the continual, like, we should replace one or two each year, then we should make sure that one or two are in the budget each year. And so the budget should probably go, instead of fifteen hundred, it should probably become like sixteen or seventeen hundred to enable two. Or like one plus a printer and a.
But do we use those things, that equipment, that much for a small town?
Oh, everybody's got a computer.
Well, no, I know that, but I mean, I.
And you, you have to.
Stay with the time.
You don't have to replace a computer every five years, but you have to at least plan to replace a computer every five years.
Well, that's your, that's, that's your thing.
And most, most high use, like, if you're everyday attacking it, like, normally, the, the recommendation is you should plan for three years.
Okay.
That doesn't really make sense here, because a lot of people don't use them all that often. These two are using them all the time.
Yeah, but like Wendy's here fifteen hours, I mean.
But, but the others are, you know.
Sporadic.
Yeah, it's sporadic, if there's a problem, we can get a replacement and, and that sort of thing.
And you can fix them.
Sometimes.
I know.
And, and so for us, that's a little less of a problem, the five years is the, this is kind of where you're starting to get into supportability problems, when you go beyond five years, um, unless you're on a platform that doesn't ever change.
Well, you're the expert on that, that's not my thing at all.
Okay, what do you want?
What do you want, right? I'm the follow person, but. Technology is yours, David.
So really, the question is which way do we want to look at it? Because if we're looking at, we want to replace the whole fleet, we kind of, we need to finish the last, like, three.
No.
And then say, in like, three and a half years, we're going to plan to replace them all, let's set the funding according to that, as well as set the funding according to being able to replace the servers at given times.
I say we'll move along where we've been.
But if we're doing kind of the individuals.
Right, individual computers.
Then we raise the budget a little in the executive budget, and this probably doesn't need to be the, the ten K.
Well, you're the, you are the person that would know more about that.
But our server needs to be replaced, and we do still need to save for the other one, so, um, I would be comfortable dropping it to about seventy five hundred or so.
Sold.
Sold.
Yes, sold.
Okay, and going back to executive, technology equipment was fifteen hundred, was, and has been, again, based on the ability to do, say, two systems or, actually, let's say, two systems and a monitor, let's make it two K.
Five, sold.
Okay.
Okay, uh, highway building maintenance, we closed. Uh, so that is discontinued. That moves us to capital outlays, which are things that we just expect, and I only want to mention them just because they're, uh, I have an idea about them. Uh, so the dam, uh, bond and the historic society, which, uh, last year were both ten K each. These are usually individual warrant articles. And the historic society one is typically petition, the dam is typically us. Based on our, the fact that these are not really funding the town, and like the historic society one is a donation to the historic society. And the dam bond one, while it has been continual, uh, it's going to be this year and I think one more year afterwards. Yeah, I know it ends in twenty six, but I don't know whether that means two more years of payments for us.
Two years, two years to go.
But the. If you remember, we kept in our unassigned fund some stuff instead of offsetting taxes. My suggestion is that when those warrant articles are being written, that we suggest to the historic society that it, instead of to be raised, be to come from the unassigned fund. And the same thing for the Pillsbury Lake Dam when we write it. So that that's twenty K that we don't tax next year, instead of the twenty K that we didn't offset this year.
David, that's, I think that's good.
The historic society one is not us budgeting, so it kind of makes sense.
Yeah.
And the dam one, if we do that for the next two years, that's actually still flattening out and making our tax rate what we would expect, because it's going to go away anyway.
That's a good idea. Yeah, that's a good idea.
Instead of hiding and like, oh, we didn't really pay that much. So, and there'll be individual warrant articles, so it's easy to talk about that way. But I think that that would make sense, I don't know how we can show that in, in our thing here, because I guess then they just wouldn't be capital outlays.
I guess not, yeah, because it comes out of your fund balance, so.
So I'm going to stick zero for the proposed for both of those here. Just for the sake of, let's assume that that happens.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea, people will understand it, yes.
I don't think people will understand that there's an unassigned bal, a fund balance, but.
It's called our fund money.
That's, that's okay.
No, I've been confused for four years, I thought, I thought we were just going to have fun.
Am I having fun?
Oh, not a blast.
Can we get it authorized to go spend?
So that brings us through all of the funds, uh, we have not gone through all of the other budget pieces, we don't want to do that to you now at nine thirty.
Thank you very much.
You're my bud.
For the sake of a overview, this now changes with, with just the changes that we've made. The operating budget would be up seven point two percent, the warrant articles would be down eight percent. For an overall total to be raised of three point one four percent increase. We haven't gone over revenues, but I suspect we'll actually have higher revenues. So in the end, uh, the, oh, yeah, that's going to get canceled out. So I expect that we will have higher revenues, we'll go over revenue numbers, I guess, next time we talk budget. But, uh, we did have the voted in, uh, increase for veterans exceptions, so that's now a higher number, instead, I think it's seven fifty instead of five hundred. Uh, and so that has increased the amount that, uh, basically, that increases the amount that we have to fund the exceptions, so everybody else pays more. So the end if projections are there is somewhere around a three point five-ish percent. But those numbers are definitely still changing, because they're not all updated, we don't have, there are several numbers that are still missing that are large guesses, that we will go over some of and have better guesses from D R A or somebody else at D O T soon.
Yes, let's hope.
Which would be on the revenue side.
Yes, that would be revenue side changes.
Yeah, right, yeah, hopefully.
But the side that we can control, uh, the total to be raised currently, just what we've talked about, uh, is three point one four percent overall.
But that doesn't include any, any increases in money that we.
This is only spent.
So that's spent, yeah, so that's, yeah, right, so, okay. You do a good job, Dave, all right.
So we can go talk about all of the other budgets, please take a look at what was linked, sent to you as a link. Uh, if it's this, it's updated, I will put the.
So right, right now, this went right to us?
Yes.
Okay.
With that same link is updated, this is live, it's up there, you'll just sign in with your account and you'll see all of this. What I didn't do while we were doing this, that there's a balance line listed through like all the funds, I didn't put it in, I'll put those in there. Or sometime in the future.
Can we stay up till three in the morning?
That's what I fixed this last time.
I know.
All right.
So.
Can we go home now?
Uh, is. The.
Non-public? My ride's waiting out there, that's why I want to go home.
Well, you've got minutes to approve, I've got something for you to sign, I was going to talk to you about the police chief.
Oh.
So was there any new business?
No.
Was there correspondence?
Uh, there was some correspondence. Basically, the, the most important thing that just came in today was the budget for the county. They have a, they have a public hearing coming up, and it's going to be next Monday, the ninth.
Okay, we probably should have announced that in announcements.
Well, I didn't even think of that, yeah.
But okay.
Next Monday?
Next Mon, I'm trying to find out what the date is, but I'm having trouble seeing.
Well, it would be the ninth, what, if it's a seventh today?
Today is the second.
Second, yeah, so second, and, so it'd be the ninth, right?
Yep.
The ninth.
I knew that.
You are correct.
Jeez.
And they, what came in our packet, the other correspondence that we have is a unsolicited, please use us for group net metering so we can make your payments less for power, uh, but we already group net meter with ourselves, so that doesn't actually change anything, it would be worse for us to try to join somebody else.
Okay, sounds like.
Nine AM Monday, the ninth, at the courthouse.
Nine AM Monday, the ninth, at the courthouse for the county's budget. Uh, seeing that we have no public, uh, we will move on to minutes, we do have one, uh, thing to point out, which was page one, line thirty.
I'm so happy I put those pages and lines in there, it makes it so easy.
I see the joint public hearing between the Hopkin and Select Board and the Webster Select Board was opened at six P M by Chair of the Hopkin and Select Board, Sabrina Dunlap, changes to the fee schedule from the previous scheduled work. And there's nothing there.
Oh, it's the second set.
It's, it's the one with the Hopkinton?
Uh, yes, so this is the Monday, November twenty fifth.
Okay, it wasn't me.
And, oh. Oh, because it says, no.
All right, now who's, what's missing?
Okay, sorry, it's actually thirty nine, not thirty, that was, that was my problem, my notes were incorrect. So line thirty nine, no members of the public attended the public hearing, either Hopkinton or Webster. No members attended in person, but there were several on the Zoom call for Hopkinton.
Yeah, Hopkinton.
Okay.
But nothing for Webster.
So that's, that's my only correction. Did anybody else have anything?
Nope.
Sounds good, miss that.
So I would have the, I would accept a motion to approve the minutes, that's November eighteenth and twenty fifth.
Second.
All right, I'll make the motion.
Okay, a motion and a second.
Yeah, okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
We developed backwards what worked.
That's, uh, Visa bills.
No, heavens.
Signees.
I don't think I have a fan.
Is there anything else, or is it then just, uh?
Hundred and a half.
No.
You got it then?
So in, in order to. So in, in order to expedite, you said you wanted to do non-public?
I do.
Okay, so I would move that we enter into, uh, is there anything else for public business?
No, no.
I would move that we enter into non-public at nine forty-four under personnel.
Second.
Uh, and I believe we were told we have to roll call, so roll call. Dave Hemingway, yes.
Normandy Blake, yes.
Roll Eric, yes.
And as per usual, we will not be returning to the stream. When we reenter public session after the non-public session, we will then be closed.